I'd like to now call the Palatank County Board of Supervisors workshop to order. Mr. Smithers will let you know how you can attend remotely.
Sure, anybody would like to join the meeting or ask a question during the meeting, raise your hand or start then.
Okay, um, if Mr. Byerley could lead us in the pledge and Mr. Williams lead us in the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheriff, we all thank you for another wonderful day in Palatank County and all our many blessings we enjoy.
Amen.
Any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions?
I move we assert.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now move to our first public comment period. Anyone wish you to speak, please state your name and address for the record. We have any for the other.
So the participants, we have, no one is raising their hand.
No one is raising their hand. Okay, we will close the public comment period and move on to old business discussion of our 2022 budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would love to break this meeting today into two segments. First, I'd ask Chief Carmen, Chief Warner would come and talk to us a little bit about part of what we showed you in the budget was a three, a three full-time firefighters just for year 22 and another three in 25, another three in 28, another three in 30. That's all part of the vision that we put together, Chief Warner put together as far as how we'll utilize volunteer help. The great volunteers are doing the work that they're doing now for us. So I thought it might be helpful to have Chief Warner here today to talk about that vision and how we're rolling that out. Part of the budget I presented to you did carve back overtime apart time request to previous years levels. So some of the requests that he asked for, I dialed them back. And so with that, I, you might be a little bit by the budget, which I presented to you as far as what his request was for overtime and part time. But I think, I think that would be helpful just to get his vision on. And then we don't have CIP issued questions, if we get into CIP discussion on apparatus, we got to make this point.
Steve? So I'm just kind of kind of stood over here and joined the conversation from afar. So I guess I want to start off is, is our vision in our department is we are a volunteer agency supplementing that career staff. And volunteers as rewarding as they are, they're, it's also they're, it's a difficult, it's a difficult, it's a difficult section, group of people to deal with over the course of time. It's about building good solid relationships, engaging volunteers, keeping them active and having them stay a part of our community. And a lot of things affect volunteers, life, marriage, divorce, babies, school, college. All these things affect our volunteers. We have an ebb and flow of volunteers throughout the years in Palatank. So, and we're doing a fantastic job of recruiting volunteers with Joe Sosa and the grants that we've gotten the past four years. And now we're into a new four-year grant cycle for recruitment and retention. We're doing a fabulous job of that stuff. We're probably, even during COVID, we're probably averaging four to six volunteers a month. But with that said, just because we recruit a volunteer, it doesn't mean they hit the ground running. A volunteer has to go through firefighter class, just like a career person does, firefighter one, two, three. Doesn't have to go through EMT, but if they're on the rescue squad, they go through EMT and/or EMT as a firefighter. So, and if you go to a career department, just, we'll just pick one randomly that I happen to work for at one time. I had 18 months to, to become a firefighter in NICO County. From the day I was hired to go to recruit school, to get into the station, get acclimated. And, and at 18 months, they expected me to be a, a full-fledged firefighter. And, and that's what we kind of pushed for our folks to do too, in that 18 months, two years. So a new person coming in, just because we recruit them doesn't mean they hit the ground running. So it takes some time to get them onboarded, get it headed in the right direction. And we find some that they don't find this of their competencies, they move on. Some we really have really good active volunteers and we are active. With that said, we want to continue as much volunteerism in Palatank as absolutely we would like to. We're a volunteer agency supplementing that career staff. And so when Ned approached me about the budget, he's a very reactionary person and he's teaching me to be much more of a planner. So he goes, well, we've really got to think further into the future. And so, so I had originally proposed to him adding three people every two years. Because I just don't know how that ebb and flow of volunteers will go. But I want to have a good planning tool so you, as the board, can plan for the future. And, uh, so.
Yes, sir. When you say three, it's 324/7?
Yes, sir.
324/7.
And, and that's a great, that's a great point. Just remember, when we have three shifts, A, B, and C, if we ask for one person, we need one for each shift. So that always comes in multiples of three. When we ask for one person, it's three.
So Will, what you're looking for is nine people every three years.
Well, that's what I had proposed to, to, that's our original discussion. And we scaled it back to where we had three this year, and I'll tell you why we wanted those. And then we.
One shift.
Correct. One person, one person per shift, those three. And then we looked at 25 because we might have a, a change in, in just in our volunteerism or just a more of a need based on caller volume, especially during the daytime, because our volunteers are typically, we're a bedroom community. Typically, our volunteers are really super active from 5:00 PM till early in the morning. But during the daytime, we're, it's, it's mostly a career, it's our career staff is answering the call. So that's, that's just the nature of our, nature of Palatank. So with that, I just wanted to plan for the future. Do we want to add those people if we don't have to? Absolutely not. If our volunteerism is way up here, we're not going to add them just because they're in the budget. We want to plan, use us planning tool for the board to be able to, to look at the future. Because the last thing I want to do is surprise you and go, I need nine people. And, and that way you can, you can focus on the future for your budgeting and the future growth of the department. And, and we, you know, and I told our career staff that, I relayed that to our career staff and relayed the same thing to our volunteer staff. Is that we're not just going to hire people to hire. We're going to hire because it's a relationship that we built at the administration with the volunteers. When they come to us with they need, we're going to, we're going to discuss it and then if we feel it's necessary, we're going to fill it. So we're just not randomly throwing those numbers out there. Usually that's a plan until, for your, for the board's sake. And then, and the only thing that can change that is if we build another fire station in this county in 10 years, we might add more people at that time. Because just because we build a fire station, doesn't mean that volunteer at the time. Most likely, a future fire station might be staffed by career staff. So that's one of the things we have to think about when we look at those projections in the future. That's the only one that, that, that I just don't know. And I wish I could give you solid answers. But honestly, volunteerism, we're going to do everything that we can in our administration to recruit, retain, and support volunteers. And, and that's, it's super important to me. That's what the board asked me to do when I got hired. And that's what I'm continuing to do. So I hope that helps.
One question. So the three, the shift training for this fiscal 22 budget is one station and.
And the request came right at the 11th hour of our budget process this year. And Company One currently, which is in the courthouse, has three personnel 12 hours, 12 hours a day, Monday through Thursday. One person 24 hours a day that stays Monday through Thursday. So, right by management side, through Friday. Friday at 7:00 PM till Monday morning at 7:00 AM is covered by volunteer staff. And again, the ebb and flow of folks, we've had a couple people move out of the courthouse area that are, were really, really good volunteers. And they've moved into other areas of the county. Still members there, but it affects their staffing during the weekend. So they asked for the, one person to make sure that somebody's there to, I think, to drive for their younger members, the people who aren't all the way up to a fire size standing, to cover that, cover that time from 7:00 PM on Friday till Monday morning at 7:00 AM. And so that's why the request came this year, because we were actually going to plan on doing the three, we're going to be for 23. We've got one person to start on for all. When I say one person, it's being one per shift, so three, so three people. So that's why we asked for three, but they asked for that, that coverage. And, and that doesn't equate to a whole firefighter position. So what that, that position will help us do is help us reduce some of our overtime expenses and some of our part-time expenses. We could potentially cover that spot with a part timer. But you got to think about our world. We, we, if we only hire part-time career firefighters, EMTs, paramedics. And not a lot of people want to work part-time jobs on the weekend. We get, we get a lot of help on during weekdays, but not on weekends. So we wanted to, that's why we chose three full-time positions to do this. And, and then they would help backfill some positions during the week that we lose during annual leave, vacation days, holidays. Annually, sick leave and holiday. So it helps offset some of other parts of our budget, but I thought it would be a consolation.
Chief, not today, but at some point in the future, I think what would be certainly helpful for me is to better understand your volunteer program, how it works, what you're doing. But then it gets to the critical piece, which says, are we as a board doing everything we can do to support that volunteer effort? Or the more that we should be, should be doing? Because, yeah, that's, they're worth their goals.
Right. And, 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 you know, right now, the request that I made, you know, that is a career staff request. But the remaining, the other, the other operating expenses that we were, were increasing were to help support volunteers. Some of it because we went back to 20, it looks like there's some big adjustments, but they're really not. A couple things we really want to do to help support our volunteers and engage them is we offer two firefighter academies a year. And we want to offer an EMT two times a year. And those are expensive classes of 15, about $15,000 per class for a firefighter, $12,000 per class for an EMT, no matter how many people there are. So that's a, if we did those four classes that we offered twice, we're, we're getting close to $40,000 in, in our training budget. And then we haven't done any, any other kind of training yet to engage our existing volunteers that are out there. So those are the support mechanisms that help, help us, that can help us just ask for that training. We also ask for, we get a lot of funding from our federal grant, our fire crack grant that for recruitment and retention. It does not cover our rescue squad brothers and sisters because they're not firefighters. So we ask for some extra funding to make sure we make them whole when we give them uniforms that we give the firefighters. And then we also give a stipend, which this year was $625 for every active firefighter or rescue squad member. We just wanted to make them whole as well. So that was an additional request that we had, that we hadn't had in the past. So those were, those are two major ones. And then the other one, it, just briefly talking about apparatus, is pride in their units, confidence in their units. And, you know, that is a, it's a, that is one of, also one of the important parts of volunteerism. They, they consider it theirs. They own it. They like, they do as much as they can and keep it clean, show it off. And so they take a lot of that. So when we present apparatus replacement plan, you know, sometimes it's not miles and hours. It's also, it's old, it's not as reliable. We lose confidence in it. It's out of service for longer times. So, so that affects the amount as well. So there's always that little, that little part to that as well, as well. That it's not just, you know, it's not just hours and miles, it's, it's other things as well.
Let me go back to Mr. Cox's question on that. You took the job as chief in the county and wouldn't.
Wow, uh, I guess I'm, uh, I'm a charlatan. I tried to come up on two years.
Two years. The good reason I ask you is because, you know, we had also a trend line during the years preceding you taking over the chief in terms of how were we doing with retaining volunteers and how were we doing with having to replace volunteers with paid staff. And now we've got another trend line since you took over. That's different from that trend line we had before you took over. Is there any way, and I understand the anomaly between the two trend lines. Is there any way that, you know, you can look at past experience and protect forward as to what that trend line looks to with us moving to increasingly having to replace volunteers with paid staff? More of it.
To more of career staff.
Yeah.
I don't like to use word professional in their disrespect.
Yeah, no.
Because all our volunteers are that, I'm not.
No, no, I understand. You know, I don't know the line.
That's why I feel like you're a career volunteer. I think our past administration, the past leadership in the fire and rescue department was very aggressive for growth of our career department. And, and I never knew the logic behind it, but I can tell you one thing. It's working in both systems, working in the career department for 22 years and working and being a volunteer or in the career department out here for 30 years. A career department is easy. They have to show up, they get a paycheck, they have to do their work. It's, it's just the way that, as a volunteer, it's really hard because they're uncompensated people. Some for a small stipend, some uniform, they're private in that community. So it takes building those relationships. And, and, and that's what the most important thing is to me, to, to recruit, maintain those relationships and move forward. So we don't have to have career staff. So it's, running a volunteer organization is difficult. They're going and building, burning buildings, risking their own lives. They go to car wrecks, pull people out of some of the ugliest places you've ever imagined. And they're doing it, it's uncompensated. And that's a hard, that's a hard group of people to manage. And it's perfectly, 100% honest, that's a hard group. Career staff, they show up, they get a paycheck. And, and so we're going to continue as long as I'm here is to maintain those relationships and keep building the volunteer fire department, fire and rescue. So, so our trend line will be at or less, is my goal than what we had forecasted. But, you know, the growth of the county might dictate something different. But if we stay closer to a steady state or that's growth that is predicted, I think we'll be in good shape with what we are looking at for the future.
Those career positions are EMTs, correct?
Yeah, every one of our career staff is a firefighter EMT. It might be a basic EMT or a paramedic.
Any other questions with chief? Just a comment. Mr. Williams and I spent a fair amount of time talking volunteers during the period I should recall the revolt. And it was that. And it's amazing turnaround, chief.
I appreciate it. And, and I, and one of the things, I'm always open, even though, even Lord and Father in Palatank, they asked about how it is around. They said, it's not fair to ask me. You need to go ask the fire companies and the rescue staff. And, and that's, that's the challenge I would throw out to the board members as well, is to stop by your local fire station or rescue squad and ask. And if there's anything I can do better for them, and they're not communicating, and they communicate with the leaders. We want, we want to keep this as close to a, a good organization as volunteer and as proud as possible.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? To echo what Mr. Cox said, you have done a tremendous job. You were thrown into the fire. You did have a little bit of view of it before you got tossed. But I think you've done a tremendous job. I think the volunteers have an enormous amount of respect for you, as do all of us. And I get that part that it's a little bit difficult to motivate that group. That all comes from within their heart. Not saying that the career people don't have it in their bloodstream too, because I think they do. It's just, what you guys do is, just a select few can go through that. It's not for everybody. The amount of hours that you put in, because I see you riding here, there, going, you're on the roll. So you're watching a, a pretty big show there, and I think you're doing a really good job. Really good. Are you going to go into any of this apparatus information?
And that's up to you.
We've got, yeah, I know it, it's board.
To do it now or later?
It might be part of your discussions later, how do we get the budget in line?
Because I'll be in the building if you want to carry on.
That's what I'm going to ask you, you want.
I'm good. I'll have some apparatus questions, Madam Blake.
Okay. We'll proceed on when we have CIP and that will.
CIP will come up, they should want it.
I'll be in the building, I'll just pop that up.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
So this transition, if you don't mind, we've got a lot of questions on board about school funding. As you saw in my proposed budget, by, by number, a significant portion of that, about $49 million going to schools. And we, coincidentally, it's very close to what they're asking for. It would have been $175,000 with their initial estimates. And part of what you, as a board, I've heard you talk about. And part of what you, as a board, I've heard you talk about is reporting categories, instruction and admin operations, the way that schools have to report their expenditures. We do appropriate to them and lump sum. We give them their twenty-four million, and, and they spend it in various categories as a chief, as I say.
Before we get any deeper in this, I want to kind of go back. But I have my first slide, slide number one.
You have the district's term.
This gets back to how we get to school budget. All right, this is, this is the fiscal operating budget twenty twenty-one. This is, uh, one of our financial policies and practices. Each year, the county administrator provides a school board with a preliminary estimate of local funding for the upcoming year. This preliminary estimate is based on a forty-seven point five percent of any increase in local tax. The school board uses this preliminary estimate to formulate a budget. Okay, so the question, do Ms. Smithers, did, did we give them a number, a target? As we started this whole school budget process, did we? Last year, we gave them a number. Did we give them a number?
We discussed it number one, was not based on forty-seven and a half percent.
I, you know, I don't, you asked about, this at some point, Mr. Barley, do we have a formula? And it's hiding in this, okay? I don't know if it's a good formula or a bad formula, it's just there. Mr. Wade?
I thought this up before in a previous meeting, you know? We had these informal agreements that have been carried forward over time that somehow have been memorialized. We need a policy or subtle policies as to what we propose to do in the school transfer.
It's, it's, and I, I've heard you, because it's, it's a question that everybody rests around the state. How do we, what formula is, is fair, what formula is effective? We've got a list of about seven or eight different counties and their policies that they're using right now. All over the place, from something as simple as we give, I think Alba Ross Charlesville gives a number of pennies. Whatever pennies work, they'll give ten pennies a year. Well, that's, that's kind of basically a pre-assessment rates are growing faster than school board rates grow. But to me, that doesn't make sense. You know, so do you give a percent, forty-seven and a half percent of taxes? There's plenty of guns there because, see, the tax rates could cut, assessment go higher. So it's, there's no magic formula, uh, so we, we did reach out to school board with a number that I've used. I've mentioned to you as a board before, how much do I think the school board budget would be? And I assume growth rates, how much will their revenues be? And it basically, to follow us, how much do we strip? And the, and the number was the twenty-four million that I proposed in the budget.
But we, we don't, we don't know what they spent this year, we're still waiting on that.
Right.
Okay, we're still waiting on a projection, okay? So how do we come up with this number? If we don't know what, what they're, what they're spending?
Well, we know what they, we know what their spending habits have been. We, we basically, we're grownups, I, I projected for you, and you look at the model, you'll see projected two thousand twenty-one numbers. Has nothing to do with what was adopted by, because.
I'm very familiar with the model, okay, and the numbers you have.
Yes, so the twenty-one numbers you're seeing in the model are us making our best estimate where we think the school board will be at June thirtieth, based on the assumption we've got in the model of twenty-one. And then we grow that again for twenty-two. So, um, we attack it from that direction. And in the end game, the growth rate that we have set, the soon, really had gotten them to about the same spot that the school board got to in their, like, their first draft.
Again, they had that growth rate.
There's three percent on, on salaries, seven percent on benefits. Seven percent on benefits, which is now aggressive that we know benefits aren't going to be that high.
Three percent on salary.
Yes.
It's been seven percent.
Seven percent of benefits, uh, on the operating cost, we're growing those at three percent. And then it's capital outlay items for going two percent per. These are small things, we don't put that CFP. So that blended number generated a forty-nine million dollar budget in the model. I mean, in, in our, when I presented to you last month, and, uh, with twenty-four point one million funding, which might be coincidentally close to forty-seven and a half percent, let me take a look at that. It was, it was not by design, it's a fact, I can't take credit for that.
I, I, I don't know that that form was, is a good form, it's just.
We're, we're forty-eight and a half as presented up here.
So basically, you added up the percentage across these categories.
We're in that budget to where I thought that they would, where they'd be operating.
But you, you're adding up these percentages across categories, and then you're using that as a multiplier.
Right, for twenty-six, right, start of twenty, so I used the twentieth base, grew to twenty-one, then go to twenty-one and twenty-two. And then essentially backed out the estimated revenues that we take, we give to the state feds for schools, which we were right, right on top of there. And when I backed up their revenue, we ended up with a twenty-four million dollar transfer. Including the cost of the three percent. Which is another topic altogether, eventually we got to talk about three percent of the state funding and all of it. It's not quite, I mean, right, we get there today, but not quite now. We didn't talk about that. But that's how we got there.
Good, good, good. I'd like to get into there, a broader subject, but it's critical to this. Both, um, members of both state houses have passed, sent it in the house, have passed a five percent increase for school teachers and state employees and for state funded employees. Okay, so they're going to give us, so you've got in your budget three percent. They're going to give us five percent. So we're not going to spend that three percent, is that correct?
They're going to give us five percent on funded positions. So for school board, sixty percent of their positions are funded by the state. So they're getting five percent on that sixty percent. And for our staff, our county's officers, we're more in the, uh.
I need, I need, I need, I need to know how all that works, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, what, what, what it, what it means at the end, okay? Because we have partially funded things, we have totally funded things, that is, my little pea brain won't get there.
Well, then a question, the second question comes, where can we answer that? Is, does everybody get to raise or just, or just the, just the teachers or just the funded positions that come in?
Let me weigh in on this, I thought, so this, this is a pet peeve of mine. You know, when, you know, the generals sound like they're glad to figure and says, we're going to give raises.
Right.
Okay, that means that they're giving raises, and this is which work in terms of quality positions.
Okay, what, what positions?
Two standards of quality.
Right.
Okay, so that doesn't include the universal in the school.
Sixty percent of it.
Right?
Right.
Okay, and then to get that amount of money, we have to put up money to draw it down. So that reduces, you know, they're putting up to six percent, and that's six percent becomes a lesser amount of money because we're having to put up something to draw it down. And I think what Mr. Cox is trying to get to, if they're proposing five percent, what does that five percent include? Does it include standards of quality or all positions? I will guess is stands of quality, yeah. Then what I think I would like to see is, what is it that we have to put up to draw down? What amount of money equal to that five percent?
All right, I can give you an initial estimate, and I, I've spent forty-five minutes, I don't have time to do that. Our initial estimate between comp board positions and the school board positions is incremental, eight hundred thousand dollars, offset by about four hundred thousand dollars, I make a memory mistake. So for us, the number is about a four hundred thousand, about a penny.
Okay, four hundred thousand, but we've already, you've already got in, in there three percent.
Yes, in, in addition to three percent.
Well, that's four hundred in addition.
This would be to add on, so I added an addition to your, to your model here, and I think you're seeing it. I had a new addition for you today that says additional salary adjustment. If we gave an additional two percent, now this is, this is simple, it's not saying cherry pick certain employees. Everybody gets an extra two percent. It would cause, that's by eight hundred thousand dollar number. And you can see that what happens to our chart. That's before, we were up at thirty million dollars in two thousand thirty fund balance. If we make this four hundred, with this adjustment on the salary.
What, what adjustment are we making on?
Eight hundred thousand increase expenditures, four hundred thousand increase revenue.
And that means five percent for everybody?
Five percent.
Okay, that, that.
I think it's schools and county schools.
Okay.
It's eight hundred percent total.
Eight hundred gross, four hundred net, additional.
Eight hundred over the three percent that was already in there.
Right, right.
So what is the net?
So that's four hundred.
Four hundred.
All right, that's what I wanted to know.
And so at the end, our fund balance, basically by year two thousand thirty, we're at twenty-six billion, six forty. We were sliding over thirty billion for that adjustment, that's telling those class now for us. So you can see that eighty-three cents now is dangerously close to our minimum of our balance.
That's only to keep our CIP where it is.
Right, that's, yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah, that's a bunch of moving parts.
Okay.
Yeah, but based on the book that you got on Monday, that change alone gets us close to eighty.
The four hundred thousand.
Yeah, the four hundred thousand, I'm handling that. Um, now there's, yes, I don't know how a lot of people aren't, I don't know how to deal with this. Because five percent, in some cases, especially on comp board officer, we're kind of getting this discussion broadening now, but on the comp board, the five percent on the level that the state funds the comp board is less than the three percent of, of salaries we're paying. You know what I mean on that?
So we have to compensate them for that.
We're paying stuff, but we're paying more than the comp board provides salaries.
Right.
It was, we need to, and, but there's cases where three, the three percent raise is going to be more for the employee than the five percent raise would be on the, on the comp board levels.
Right.
And I'm sure the comp board is hoping that we'll pay five percent on our levels, not theirs, but.
Does this have any, call it rolling impacts in terms of our contribution to reclaim the fund?
Sure.
So that's even more, that's even more money. Uh, does it have any benefit impact? Well, the sound, the question is, does salaries impact the benefit?
I cause, but not to, I mean, obviously FICA doesn't have that, you know, seven and a half percent.
FICA retirement includes free life insurance, those are the ones that are rate based.
What's it again, FICA?
FICA, free life, and retirement.
Did all three of them have a variable factor to it?
Okay, so four hundred thousand is just the start.
Well, yes and no, because the number is like eight hundred thousand dollar number was my forty-five minute estimate of, of a prorated number. It's printed in the history.
No, no, that, that, but I really would like to see what this is going to cost in, in its aggregate.
Under what scenario, five, five across the board or, or a? Yeah, right.
Well, the question is, you know, in the past, the state's given us some flexibility, then we're going to do five if we'd already done, you know, rate.
It'd be mandatory to be in this by any, so we, we don't have the chance to.
So we don't have the chance to.
It gives a two-year target. We could do three, three, you should get there.
All right, so my question is, you know, if they're saying five percent, you know, and do we have any flexibility in terms of we want to do something less or do we have to do five percent?
So I think the flexibility would be do, do what we want, treat whatever we want, and then if we have risk of losing there, increase funding. And, and at this case, we don't have an extra four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if there's four hundred thousand dollars in funding, there will be, we would lose. Uh, the top seven, eight hundred thousand dollars expenses.
Well, you know, again, I mean, what we lose and what we gain.
Right, right. Uh, but to get the, uh, the positions themselves, especially the comp board side, five percent raise on what they're recruiting is, in often cases, less than three percent on what we. So the, we want to be.
Sorry, you lost me on that.
Let's just take, let's take a deputy who we're paying fifty thousand dollars. If the comp board has funded that position at thirty thousand, five percent of thirty thousand, a fifty hundred dollar raise, three percent of fifty, fifty thousand to fifteen hundred dollars. So in that case, it's a perfect.
It's a wash.
It's a wash. I don't think that's their intent, I think their tendency is that the five percent come off at fifty thousand dollars. You know, but that's not what they're funding.
Madam Chair, so I think going back to Mr. Williams' question, I heard what you were saying, right? We're in the second year of the Biden, Biden.
Right.
Right, that's why the five percent is called this year, not being able to split like Mr. Wade was saying, splitting it.
Last time we got a great workforce last time.
But thanks for clarifying that. My next question is, when your chart goes down to the fifteen percent number, or it's actually eighteen percent.
Eighteen.
Okay, so when it actually goes down to that eighteen percent, are you rolling this four hundred thousand dollars every year out?
Yeah, sure. And plus inflation, so four percent plus three percent rate, four hundred thousand plus a three percent raise every year.
So you're kind of saying that the state's going to come out with a five percent raise every year?
And.
And annually, every year?
Yeah.
What our experience has been is that once they draw a line in the sand.
Right.
Then they give us, let's say about their funding up, they, they'll come back, it's generic, it's generic. But generally, we expect the same funding level, plus, plus actually maybe three percent, actually maybe. But we'll get that base carried forward.
So as we come down and it looks like we're floating on the line there, that's simply because the assumption that's being made is there's going to be this four hundred thousand dollar expense on our behalf every year created by this five percent increase that the states bring into the table in two thousand twenty-two.
Yes.
May not happen, may not happen.
The way you mean, but.
End of the future.
Well, if, if I back to writing four hundred thousand, if this eight hundred thousand expense offset by four hundred thousand dollars revenue, we will have a four hundred thousand dollar hit each year, plus a three percent raise each year.
Okay.
So, yes, I got. So now looking at the end game here, is the far right column shows a total of twenty-six billion, six forty. That's more than six times four hundred. It's, it's four hundred thousand plus inflation, so.
Then you're figuring it three percent.
Right, you're figuring it three percent, right, two point nine.
Give you a cannonball until you carry it forever.
Well, that's what the state.
I'm sorry, I got us off the school and.
I want to make sure I understand, you know, where Mr. Barley was at with his questions, because it's important that all of us understand. So state does a five percent, okay, increments, okay? And we choose to draw that down enough, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How does that affect transferers going forward to two years?
Would, would you need change, finish from the state?
No, same, I'm sorry, I missed the finish from the state, transfers.
I think, I think, uh, so on the comp board side, I believe the base would just be lowered by that, by the incrementally base, they will get this comp board side, and next year, whatever the lower base would be, would grow as, any other. All we're doing is just take the haircut in twenty-two, if we turn up money, turn, say no raise, we just take a haircut, and next year, our budget will grow, just like it would have been, but it's starting at a lower level. Can I ask a question?
So does that mean that if we just take the state out of it, we have a much more stable situation from knowing what we're going to do?
What? Yeah, yeah.
If we took the state's element out of it.
We were there.
Then, you know, whoever's in these chairs at whatever point really has what I would call control over it. And, and, and at that point, it makes it much more easy to plan ahead. We just take the state's money out of it.
And not worry about it.
We don't want that, we just stick with our plan, which is our plan, and we're not being influenced or having to amend our plan based upon the state tossing money in that is not proportionately equal. Right?
Right.
Would, would that affect us with like the comp board and the common? I, I see what you're saying, I kind of like that in a way, just take them out because it's unpredictable, it's, you know, every year. But what would the ramifications of that be?
A couple of things, obviously, the, uh, uh, the feedback that you would get, you know, from everybody who says the state's operators are bad.
Right, they get all the rest.
That part of it, you don't hear that on the other side, when we're giving three percent, so the state's getting zero.
Right, right.
But, but that, it is, you know, from a teacher's standpoint, from a constable's standpoint, the five percent number is a number that may, you know, is something they're focused on.
Right.
If anything other than that would be, would be an issue.
Before we had COVID, every year down at the, it was, uh, get the name of the, it was down next to, down in the, uh, next to the back.
Amen.
They would have the VACO, V M L conference. And in those years, and those, those comp finance conferences, they're very good conferences because they're giving you insight on what's going to happen in the general assembly coming up. And they also give you the history of what's been occurring in the general assembly. You might remember several years ago, the mantra was the state hadn't been funding education the way they should have been. Okay, there's a lot of information, you, you know this, that was being pushed out from VACO, V M L, urging the state to step up to the plate and fund education because it was being pushed down on localities. So I agree with what Mr. Vile said, you know, we can only control on our end. But the problem is, and I don't know how to solve it, so just do full disclosure. Now you have Ouija board trying to predict what the general sum that's going to fund going forward and what amounts. Well, now they're going to step up or are they going to do like they had done in previous years and pull back on their funding for education? Because that does affect us because then we have to make that decision whether we want to make schools whole. You know, with the difference between what they've been funding, what they're funding now. So that's the only part I'm bringing up, you know, we don't know what the.
Unfortunately, please understand my numbers are based on the county line. All of our positions are comp board funded, so Charlie, I would say half of our county positions are comp board funded, the sheriff, court, board, measure, treasurer.
Yeah, it's varying, the sheriff definitely has more than is funded. There are, there are some positions in some departments that you get six thousand dollars for the whole position. So it just depends on the position level and how many employees, but not every employee in our, any of our constitutional officers are fully funded by the state. Well, that's fully funded anyway, but even not all of them are comp board, get any comp board money.
They're not recognized as being comp board.
Yeah, but I think the logical choice, beautiful, always dangerous, but opinions is too much, but you can't take, just because twenty-three year deputies are funded by the comp board and twenty-three aren't, you can't, you can't say, well, these deputies get, you start with a universe of, of comp board employees, whether it's commissioner, treasurer, you got to treat all the same, no matter what.
Yep.
Then the question is, do you go away from the comp board position and treat this Charlotte's office or Brent's office? Because they're not quite another comp board, how do you treat those? That's a secondary decision. And the state's the same with schools, sixty percent of their job are field use positions. And how do you do that, that, the board? But my number I gave you was a forty-five minute estimate of what it costs to do a blanket over everybody for about five percent.
Very true.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I was. Charlie, you know, when the general summit does the comp board raises, don't we have a way that we deal with that in terms of, you know, if, you know, for example, they come up with money for the comp board positions, don't we have some flexibility in terms of how we deal with that? It's like I remember something.
Much like, um, Mr. Feller and I were talking about today, but at one point there was some push for having to certify. We gave them the raise on their comp board salary or not. That never came to fruition. We never had to do that. Um, we do, I mean, there's lots of places across the state that can supplement their constitutional officers. So of course, if they're giving the raise, that's their raise or pay. We do supplement ours, so. I don't know what the language says for this go around, because they sometimes write stuff different and I haven't read it. So I don't know if it's a bay or shall, or because we supplement, we still get the revenue. I mean, since it's just so new coming out, I haven't been able to do that kind of research, but I haven't found that out for you. But in the past, there has been some, I think.
Where I'm going is if they're going to be giving us this money and can we absorb this and, you know, if we want to treat everybody equal? So if we're going to treat everybody equal, we're going to make sure that they're getting the same amount of raise from the county administrator as, you know, as their coworkers. So do we have flexibility when we get this money for, you know, comp board positions to treat that within the context of what the county is doing overall with the raises?
Like, so I speak to what's happened in the past and I would say yes, but again, I haven't read it. If they change any kind of language that's saying how they, that must, that shall, that.
I'm sure.
Got it, you know.
If Mr. Vile was talking about the control, he can say that. Just remember, when you're looking at this model that we're planning on, it is a massive array of assumptions, some of which will be wrong every year. We, we, we know that, okay? So you don't fall in love with thinking you're getting a whole lot more control, okay? Because it's always there, whether it's in the economy, whether it's political or any otherwise, that are going to impact this. And, um, and we will always, in my opinion, be hostage to what the general assembly decides to do with their unfunded mandates.
Years ago, King William, I was on bank commission, they had kind of improvement program that was shared with Palatine, and I remember the preamble, it said, you know, it was, it was, by our targets is, you know, all predictions are based on some past performance and those past, that past performance is used to project to the future. It's usually always wrong. That's what. So I thought that was, I thought that was pretty honest.
That's honest.
That is behind us. That is a topic that we've got, we've got to get off around. And I, my, my, back to our schools, I started this with the schools. In general, we've had discussions of five reporting categories. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Harvard Public Accounts and their comparative cost report, but they do accumulate data and they try to do it consistently, and I think they do a good job of that for all ninety-five counties and all cities and towns in Virginia. So what we, the finance department worked on last week is to give you a breakdown on school. We started with schools, school spending by, uh, by the category, looking back since two thousand fifty. Now, unfortunately, the comparative cost report has not been updated to include two thousand twenty data yet. But what I want to show you a little bit is, is a tool that you guys want to have at, at home. You can, it talks about spending per capita, how they're spending on their kids, per capita, and we also have per student. And so in addition, this is the starting, where's Palatine right now? This is the grand total. They've financed, also broken this down into instructional, administrative, people transportation, operate, operation spending. What is non-instruction, which is really cafeteria. Uh, it all rolls up to this number here. And what the tool finance put together for you was, you can start saying, okay, how do we compare to Deadwood? And if I want to look at, there's definitely no, Palatine is a blue, Deadwood is a green. It's, you could, as a, by giving you the model, I'll be glad to give it to you, take this home and say, well, again, four local counties around here, and over Chesterfield, Palatine, and right there. Or, and think, or think similar counties that you know of, the Deadwiddies, the French Georges, the Bodotots of the world. But whatever you put in here, in, in this universe, we can compare air spending. And that, I've got two counties in here, Deadwood and Bodotot, and it shows the average of those two counties versus, versus air spending.
So it doesn't break Bodotot out?
It does. Those two, first, now, what about, about themselves?
Yeah.
I take them out and I show our, our blue line versus the green line. Uh, so this is just your way of telling, depending on what counties you pick, you can feel it. What I've noticed, you know, but I'm interested to see what you see. We do, okay, transportation, we typically spending more per kid than other counties that we booked at. But on the other category, it was pretty close. Uh, so this is a tool that A, shows you the fact that we're spending the money at schools by category, and B, how is that compared to the rest of the world?
I'm sure.
Yes.
Um, and, you know, what I would like to know is when we're doing the comparison, are we doing apples to apples? For example, are we including debt or some school, some of the localities not including showing debt as part of, you know?
That's a good point. Debt in the state and the certification process, everybody's auditor. Helps the, the locality spin up this form, and this form has, it's supposed to be compared to, everybody's supposed to be doing it the exact same way.
Right.
And so capital items, school buses are in this number.
Yes.
But buildings and grounds, building improvements are not. So the, the state's calling school buses as transportation, and that's the only capital I know of that's in these numbers statewide. So if you see us spending more, it's probably because they would buy more buses or we have more routes and transportation than other counties.
But, but you, I think your point is, is the inputs entered, the comparison are regulated to make sure that, to the extent possible, we're doing apples to apples.
That's, that's.
So if you're including debt or not including debt, we're doing this.
Right, and debt is not included as part of this for schools.
It's not.
It's not. Uh, but ultimately, we'll get this type of comparisons for you for, for every functioning area of government, we'll, we'll focus on schools. But I know that you guys asked me questions about the schools that's been in my category.
So Bodotot's up there now.
Right.
You know how many elementary schools are in Bodotot County? Seven. Let's look at King George, let's look at that one, let's see what that is, if you don't mind.
No, that's my brother. King George and Bodotot.
No, just King George.
Yeah. But you want per capita or you want per kid?
That's okay.
Palatine per student is higher than King George, that we look at, yes.
Palatine's high than King George.
Per student, but not per capita.
Right. They have forty-six hundred, fifty-fourty-one per student. Do you now? Can you put up the model for the budget and the backup, this piece for the budget?
I think the backup, you want to look at.
I want to look at, I want to look at this ten year summary. This is back, this is the model that based on the budget we're looking at. And, um, I want you to scroll down, so you go all the way down.
Maybe because I think my raise is still in there. Yeah.
No, I want to look at the bottom.
I know about it.
Bottom line.
I've got what you, you, you're including four, definitely, I don't know about the rate.
No, I don't, I don't.
Make, make any difference. One more. All right. Bill, have you got a hand that you're using that we should be referencing?
No, this is, this is a budget that he got this morning, that he gave me this morning, gave all of y'all.
He did? Okay, so it's in this package?
Yeah, that was, that was the summary, yes.
No, it's not in the package, it's not in the package, but we're going to put it up here on the screen, so you'll be able to see it, okay?
Maybe.
Let me see.
That's what I was going to.
We're not, we're not, we're not.
I got schools that load, thank you. Uh, that is coming from, uh, thank you. I got a summary file I printed for you guys, and that's.
Okay, stop right there.
Yeah, let me, let us see, you can see it.
Okay, we'll get, get rid of the top, we'll look at schools, that's what we're going to look at, they pull that out.
Can you turn the light off for a quick, with that?
I want you to, I want you to look at the bottom line percentage of general fund funding with debt service and bus, okay? So in twenty, FY twenty is.
You're trying to get a bigger old page.
You're all right with me now, I found one.
Okay.
Took me a little while. Okay, so here we go to the bottom line, percentage of, of, of general fund funding with debt service and bus for FY twenty is fifty-two point eight. By FY thirty, uh, is fifty-seven point five. Okay, so the point is, we do all these comparisons to other places, I don't really care, okay? How do we stop the growth in our percentage of general fund?
And, and I can tell you that what, and I looked at this earlier, because we're growing, my assumptions are, I mentioned to you, the three percent salary, seven percent fringe, that rate of growth is higher than my revenue projection growth there.
I was going, I was going to bring it up there.
You either cut expenditures or you increase revenue.
Yeah, so in this case, I've grown revenue, I've grown expenses at whatever our assumptions are, and I've grown revenues at a slower rate. So I'm more concerned with, with, by default, forcing your number up.
Okay, so from my standpoint, I'm not buying in that fifty-three is the right number, but, okay? But how do I, you know, how do I get a hold of my school spend, okay? Our spending for school and stop it, okay, as a percentage of general fund? Can we just give them fifty-three percent and call it open? We never change it? I, I, that's not a good answer either, but going from fifty-two eight to fifty-seven five is not the answer either. Mike, this is the number you were looking for, we were talking about by choice the other day, what, what percentage of the general fund is everything debt and?
Well, this is, this, this is. Fifty.
You're right.
Yeah, it was like a total.
Yeah, I wouldn't argue that, yeah.
When you're talking about revenue, explain what you, what do you mean by revenue? I mean, I know what revenue is, but what do you include in that?
Take in the, every county, every line item of school revenue, you know, certain ones I grow at three percent, sometimes I grow at zero percent. I made assumptions on growth rates.
Okay.
And it came down remarkably close on twenty-two, what the state is telling us, that their money's been borrowed and where we're living. And so I'm growing those revenues, if you can see them online right here on the screen. They're growing at my, my assumed rates. Unfortunately, these rates are less than I'm growing the whole budget, which is forcing our funding to go up at this higher rate. It's a rapids are dragging on the state feds, and we're going to keep our great schools under these assumption, under these growth levels. And the check we write every year is magic that will.
So that's a question. Maybe just make. It's impossible to give us a factual number because you can't tell us what the contribution is going to be from the state over the next seven, eight, ten years. And as that number, which me personally, my opinion is, it's going to go down. Which means our numbers are going to go up, which is what you're doing there. The, the one question that I have with that percentage of general funding with debt service, and then you've got the plus the buses. The one part that I don't understand is our C I P, what I've understood is we're paying cash for buses. So what, what's the school bill, if we're paying cash and we're going up, um, four percent in our debt service, where's that four percent? We're not, there's only, I think in the year two thousand thirty, we're going to do thirteen million, uh, for the high school expense. That's borrowed money, borrowed money. But between now and then, why is our debt service, I mean, I get the percentage of funding going up, I mean, it makes sense to me.
Yeah.
You don't know what's going to happen with the state money, that goes down, so therefore our contribution goes up, which makes the percentage go up.
Your misses, your debt is already out there, like for this school. We've got debt that we're allocating to schools, that we're saying, hey, this is debt service accounting staying on behalf of the schools.
Right.
That isn't working against the math. I love, so I've tried to add that debt service, Charlie, we brought money for the middle school and.
Transportation.
Yes, we've got some debt that we're calling school debt already before we had the new C I P.
So is that debt for the transportation facility in the middle school not included in our fifty-three point two percent?
It is. I've added it in because in my opinion, to look at just a lot above it, forty-seven percent.
Right.
And to, to me, I feel like we're shortcut, we're shortchanging ourselves, going funding schools for debt service and.
Yeah, we need to put them together. So the picture looks like.
Yes, that's what that number is.
It's really costing.
This is what, yeah, bottom numbers, the real cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I get that. So why, why didn't we see a drop there? Because the high school comes off in twenty-four? I, no, the high school, the week, the high school comes off.
Yeah, I, this, this would include that schedule, but it could just be an increase in the buses they purchase, because they write a check, they pay, pay go for buses right now. So there, that's built in, so maybe that year there was extra buses they bought, right? We'd look at that spending on the buses.
Because we, the, the high school was gone.
That's what's pulled up. So also, the way the schedules work is in the earlier years, we're usually paying more interest and then the debt payments layered on the new stuff and then, I mean, we don't pay an even amount every, the same amount every single year. So that could be causing some of that fluctuation is how the, the debt was structured.
Can you tell what the, if, when the, which one, it drops off, the middle school or the?
High school.
High school, high school. Because we, as far as this is concerned, we don't care whether it's debt or principal, it's just a number.
System service, yes. But we should, but we're trying to, that's a, that's built into the number, whatever debt service is in place, plus the paid over school buses, so we're trying to capture on that fifty-three percent.
So, but it gets back to. So, but it gets back to, why would we let the expenditures grow faster than the revenues?
Because I'm under the theory that it doesn't cost any less to eat, play in a building or teach a building.
Oh, no, 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 but no, what what costs less is you don't have the money.
Yeah, I mean, the cost of running the school system is X.
Well, this, but this is, this is, this is taking a five point. Okay, out of our ability to fund public safety, um, that's a big number.
Yeah, I agree with this, I agree.
So how, the 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 management piece, okay, is we can't let this happen. I mean, we, whether that means we have to grow revenues faster, this is debt.
I think it's, it's something that we all were, every county is facing. If state funding does not keep up with the cost of inflation, it would always be in this position.
But this, the model that you created, whatever it took is worth it to, for me to see that once. Okay, that's, that's the train wreck.
Hey, county rabbits.
I'm sorry, I just, I found this just really helpful, man.
Or, and I'd be glad to give you the model if you want to, not this model, but.
No, 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 no. I went through the model and looked at that line to see it all roll, you know, debts rolled into it, vehicles rolled into it as a percentage of the general fund, okay? I can wrap my head around that. Okay, and some of this other stuff gets a little less of there.
But going back to Mr. Cox's question, how do you synchronize this growth that you're seeing in schools with revenues? How do you do that?
You know. No, I don't know how you do that, I mean.
Yeah, rhetorical.
Growth, do you mean literal growth, the number of students attending? Kind of a misnomer with the growth.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, because your, the growth is actually the lack of funding coming from the state, it's.
This goes back to the first question I asked, okay, looking at our policy. Did we give them a number? Okay, now, if you want to stop it, we can give them a number and say, this is what we have.
And this is what you.
Mike, here's, here's what I got, okay? Sort of, okay?
Some, Ned, to that point, when you were doing research, have you found that other jurisdictions do that where they kind of say?
They do.
This is it, and you work with within it.
Some of them are six levels deep, but a lot of times it's a percentage of tax revenues. And we, they have forty seven and a half percent unofficial guideline is, is is probably tax plus communication tax, I think. But in different locality, as far as what what piece of the puzzle they work in there, the problem that we're on the other side of the hat, the ones that are tied into tax revenues, you know, tax decrease, excuse me. Oftentimes growth in Virginia are growing faster than the cost, the cost of inflation schools. So we had a ten percent reassessment to last year, which was basically five percent per year. In general, schools aren't growing in quite that fast, you know, the operation are. So you can't just give them percentage of, of what a penny does for you, because sometimes that's be given more, a lot more. If you give, if you don't lower your tax rate, and you use, or if you do lower your tax rate, that, you know, it impacts what you, what you would pay them. And it necessarily not match what it costs for an school either. So it's kind of a, to find the perfect formula that that you can say the math works, and that's what we started playing with in our office this week, is there a way that we can do something that's fair, you know?
You, you come from probably one of the best run counties in Virginia, if not the country, in Redco County.
They kept, they went to the school board early with a number, well, here's, here's your twenty, they didn't know what the twenty four million, here's your number. Uh, and get back to us.
Okay. The county administrator, staff, you, part of, how did y'all get to that number? Were you privy to that? I'm assuming that you were in those discussions.
Yeah, it, I think it's, it was a fairness number, looking at growth rates and history and what if general budget was thrown at four percent level, the contribution to school board probably drawn at four percent level. And here's, here's your number, in that case, if I gave you twenty three million dollars last year, a four percent inflation, and we're roughly another million this year. You know, that, here's your number, come back to us using that number, that's the concept.
The problem I've had, you know, found with formulas is because it's not always equal across fiscal years in terms of what's hot and what's not.
Right.
You know, we may have a certain issue on our side that they don't have, that we may need to be pulling back and, you know, lessening the transfer in order to be able to meet and deal with assimilate schools. And, you know, like we had with COVID, you know, we didn't quite know what the costs were going to be.
Right.
So, you know, we took steps to make sure that we were prepared to provide that cushion that we, you know, that need to be there. But what's wrong with the Henrico approach? From your standpoint, as the former finance, you know, director, does that work or does it not work?
Well, I think it, I think it works, I think you might, uh, might say, the school board might say that does work in Henrico, but I think it works.
Well, they're not here right now.
I think it does give a number, but I think Henrico is goes beyond the color, beyond the, typically they're trying to give a number that they can defend to the public, this is a fair number of increase towards these budgets and these operations and, and, so there's some logic behind it. Yeah.
I'd like to follow up on that question. In RICO, school population is growing.
Right? Yeah.
Okay.
Not too much, but.
Okay, so when you've got a growing population, that has one set of pressures on. If after COVID's all wiped out, we are decreasing, they just stopped subsidizing, that, that's a whole nother set of pressures. Yeah, where we've got to make up the difference because of lack of funding for students.
So right hand, they're keeping us whole.
Right, and it's, it's a balancing act, because you don't want those numbers to dip too much, because.
They're not gonna hold us, keep us whole forever.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, to this extent, this is available to you, I mean, I'd be glad to show you, five counties against one, against those, one county, if you want to compare, anybody who would show it to you. I didn't probably save your home, but give you this model, and let you look at the clear accounts.
You know. I don't much, it's just me, I don't much, I like to see where we are per student, okay? But I go back to, that's all well and fine, and when I add it all up and look at the percentage of general fund, that's what I've got to deal with, okay? And that's what I've got to get my hands on. We can't afford a five point increase. Now, this is just a set of projections and could be a lot, but but it's, 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 it's eye opening for me.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go a step further, the comparisons work up to a point. Because I bet you if you went in, you did a site visit, you know, a particular county, you would find that their numbers are nuanced by circumstances that, you know, we might not be familiar with, or might not have to consider.
Every time it's that story.
Everybody.
And and.
Everybody's got a story.
If out of time, it could be, you know, a number of miles between, an amount range between the one high school and the, you know, who knows what's the, what's the story there, so. But.
Very cool.
It, you know, it gives you a feel for what areas where we're spending money more than other counties are, but in total, that's a big chart of top. As a comparison. Um, so that's all, that's, that was all the, I was trying to, okay, I have addressed Mr. Paul's question about, I'm sure his other side has addressed it. What I'm thinking about, he asked about our funding as a percentage of those, of these five categories. And I, since we don't appropriate by these categories, not many people do. You know, it's normally lump sum appropriations, school board, I can really show you, okay, up and in or instruction, here's their twenty three million. I can make up something, divided proportionally, make a double twenty three million, but it doesn't, it's not really what's happening out there in hours. They could put all twenty three million in instruction, and everything else, they, so it's all one big forty nine million, the way, the way we're doing it.
Which is the way most everybody, right, so it's nobody that that really breaks out of.
We're the norm, but I'm sure there's some people doing it, like that are doing.
Right.
So with that, and I thought that I could see what items, if you wanted, I could bring it back to the model and show you what proposal I sent you Monday, the eighty three cents, and let you uh, work with any questions you have or scenarios you'd like me to run for you, I could go ahead and tackle those. But any, anything we can do for a question line that you'd like to see?
One thing I think we should dabble into today, probably, we're gonna have to talk about tax rate, you know, kind of get some sort of a a game plan, I think, on that, I mean, I know Mr. Cox likes the stair casing. You know, kind of go the number, exactly, I'm more leaning on the, let's get one and stick with it, I don't know what you two think, I mean, and there, what the pros and cons are each and you know. Hang on, I'll take a, we used to date for ten years, right?
One second, let me, I sent you all this this morning.
Uh, we're documented now, bro.
It's, it's the, it has, it's a tax. This, uh, real estate tax rate.
Don't walk out of your Zoom meeting like that.
Okay, here we go. You have to make that a little bit smaller. Okay, here it is, just, just here, this is two thousand eighteen, because that was the last, it was easy to pull together, okay, we're still at eighty eight cents. But you see the big four? City Richmond, Chestville, and Rycow, Hanover, then you see everybody else, okay? This, not that you want to adopt any, but it gives you some idea of of where we live. It also tells you you want Cumberland, okay? Needs a landfill, but they'll only charge seventy eight cents to their, for their services. So, uh, that's, that's the universe around us, one of the ways of looking at the tax rate is trying to pick, from my perspective, is looking at it uh, as a competitive tool, okay? If you want to compete, that's, that's taking the taxpayer out, and we got to put the taxpayer back in. Uh, and so, uh, we're at eighty five now. And we're talking about in this budget proposal going to eighty three.
It might be some cases where we don't look at a local county, you can see, New Kent's example, we look at New Kent spending on tools, we want to see a lower number than that.
New Kent's, New Kent's got a pile of money.
I had a long conversation with one of their, uh, long serving board members, Tommy Chella. You know, they've got, you know, the race track down there, you know, they're funding their capital through the plan, but the money that they receive from that enterprise, so it's different, that's what I'm saying, you gotta be, you gotta be really careful.
And they have a percentage, they get a percentage of every Rosie's Emporium goes back to them, no matter where it's located.
They sure did.
Yeah. So, uh, anyway, that's it, you want to talk about this, I thought this is just a useful set of numbers.
So, going back to the eighty three that you have, that was, we paid cash, everything in the CIP, including the six point five and the Parks and Rec, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, can we get it back up in the?
I saw that first.
I'm so sorry. Eighty three cents was.
The, so that assumed we paid cash for everything in our CIP up to the, including the five three park, the six point five.
The way I got to, the way I made the eighty three cents work was borrowing money.
Okay, I wanted.
Borrowing money for buddy free.
Okay, and this doesn't have the, that line is not the same line we had a minute ago when we put in a salary adjustment.
The salary adjustments.
And it got right, it got right down on top of it.
Yeah. Like, yeah, there, there's a salary adjustment.
There we go. Kind of a reverse, reverse warms.
Matt, sure, I've got questions about the budget document itself, I don't know when you want to.
I, I, I have, I have a number to.
Yeah, but why don't we talk about that? Tax rate stalled a little bit. Nobody really wants to dabble into that. Nobody seems to want to talk about that. Should go with this.
All right, I, I just want to be clear, you know, Ned. Oh, yeah. Same, the, new world. I just want to be clear on our positions, you know, while I went through, you know, your executive summary, I didn't get to, I think you said that we had fourteen positions, and then I went to different categories that got less than fourteen.
I'd say it's fifteen, uh, listed.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, what are the proposed positions?
What pantry you want to?
Huh?
What pantry?
Uh, I'm sorry, fifteen. That's a very, I mean, oh, one of those general government budget asks the fourteen, fourteen positions described above. An additional three full time positions that were part time positions, which involved, evolved into full time positions. Just want to make sure I'm.
Mr. Williams, while you're looking at that, would you also go to page eighty three and you'll get another number? Eighty three. Eighty three, so the total is ten.
All right, I'm on page eighty three, I'm not.
I'm not following.
I'm not following it either.
This stat, staffing, okay, look at staffing positions total. Okay, twenty one is two hundred and seventy three, proposed twenty twenty two is two hundred and eighty three, that's ten. FTEs are plus thirteen point oh two, that's not the same numbers.
Right there.
So, I don't know which, I don't know which one is right, but they're, they're not the same.
The, the new positions in there are correct, I had a little issue with, with trying to, so I'm going from the staffing plan from February twenty twenty, and I found some, uh, part timers that got left off of the positions, they're part timers. We did, Chase, do they have their update?
Yes, uh, no.
I need to, I'll be corrected that in the book. Yes, so there should be another one, and also another yellow sheet, just like up on the screen.
Okay.
Yes, but there's also a great new staffing plan.
Okay. So now I have three different sets of numbers?
What I want to do is understand positions, you know, by the different departments, okay? Because, you know, I, yeah, I need to know how the two fifty dollars.
So we should look at this one, why don't we go over this one right here? That one's.
Start at the top of that, or the first one we have is the community development, I'm talking about. The only positions that were proposed, community development, were permanent center manager and a new inspector and building inspector, commercial and inspection area. There's two positions in community development. The real estate assessment office has four positions, but two of them will come on board at, at mid term of the year, so I've got, I've got.
I'm totally lost already.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You got, you got right.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
The second section there, you see total assessor?
All right. Okay, I told you what's that. I'm just, okay, I'm sorry.
It's, it's four new positions, but in fiscal year twenty two, it's like two and a half full time equivalents, because two of those positions will be, uh, will only be in place for half a year. And the other three will only be in place a half year.
So we should be looking at the far right hand column at FY twenty twenty two.
As far as full time equivalents?
I don't know what we're doing with fiscal year twenty two.
I would look at the campus that's four, four bodies in the assessment.
Right, the first.
Because that's, that's how many positions we're filling during that this week.
Yeah, the number, there's the number of bodies, which is right, you know, this FTE is the total. Right.
Which will equate to salary.
Right, right.
So, we, four, four positions in the real estate assessment office. We have the three fire positions we talked about earlier, and an upgrade of a position that's, uh, a part time program, so that's, so just three new positions in time.
But those three. That's one a shift, look. That's one a shift, look. I'm sorry, I keep talking, different language. We all order something.
Our IT technician is another position. There, we're up to two. And we've got, we go down to our two deputies in the School Resource Officer position, Sheriff's Office, and Animal Patrol position that, we're taking away two part-time positions and adding a full-time position. So it ended up being, they'll walk in, actually lost a position there, but it's incremental, one position in a, in the Sheriff's Office. And you count Animal Control.
All right, hold on, let me see, I understand. So we had two part-timers.
Right.
Okay, so we're getting rid of the part, two part-timers and creating one FTE.
Right.
All right. Well, equivalent FTEs, that would mean that that's, it's mutual.
It is, on FTEs, but body count, the two bodies that were part-time are gone, two new, one new body's coming in for full-time, so.
Y'all missed there, just so you know. You, David went past you.
You and you, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Y'all passed each other in the dock there, because you didn't hit what he said, what, you were not answering to what David said.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So he speaks my turn.
I got what you were saying. He wasn't there. You're talking FTEs, David's talking bodies, right? So, we had two part-time people. The Sheriff's Office wants two people for the Sheriff's Office, then we had two part-time in Animal Patrol. So we get rid of the two part-time in Animal Patrol, and we only have one net number, body in the Sheriff's Office. You, you, you with us? Am I right on there with what you're asking, David?
You are eliminating, you're, you're, you're a wash in your FTE. You had one total FTE with two part-timers, now you're gonna have one full-time person with one.
The way you always did it, Charlotte, you would take the part-time's and you would add them up to equate with, what is the equivalent FTE?
Right.
Yes, so you said it, it is a wash on FTEs, but Animal Control better.
Right, right.
So I speak his mind, which.
That's fantastic.
I'm all right with it. They're doing.
And that's similar discussion, we can do it together. But the total PSO is not one.
What I said. They have one.
Not one. What, and you give, no, it's not one, you've got two, two resource officers and you have one technician. That's what you end up with in that department, okay?
And then you subtract two.
You think you subtract the two DTs? You subtract that over the only FTEs, you don't subtract them over on the bodies.
FTEs or bodies?
Both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that.
Yeah. Because we're taking, we're two people. Okay, you had two, two people as Animal Control technicians making up one full-timer. You now got rid of those two part, two part-timers, and brought one back, so two minus one is only one. In bodies. In bodies, FTEs is the same, so that's, I mean, that's.
Charlotte, we're looking at two different ways.
Right, yeah, look at PSO, we probably should have broken out PSO, I saw, and Animal Control, as they're two departments that manage by one. Maybe it would have been clearer that way.
Similar story on Recreation Spaceless, we take in a part-time person and turn it into full-time person. So there's no body, no change of bodies employed, but we actually could increase fiscal FTE.
Would you would increase the FTE now?
We are. And similar with the registrar, she was able to shuffle internally, rearrange positions to her. There was no FTE change in registrar's request, just some rearranging of positions. Social Services was two, it should be three new positions, actually be two new positions and a, a part-time office position. So, three new positions to cap part-time position, and then they were upgrading another position to, grand total ending two point seven five FTEs and three bodies.
Of the two point seven five FTEs, we, for, for all of them, we pay twenty-nine percent?
Yes, that was a blended number, it is.
Okay, yes, so for, for all, every, all FTEs, okay.
So in total, the number, we're talking about as fifteen positions, forty point three FTEs.
So then last paragraph on page fifteen should be fifteen positions, so fourteen?
Yes, I see, yeah.
See, we're on that at the very bottom.
Yeah, I see.
Actually, the budget adds the fourteen positions described above, and additional three full-time positions that were part-time positions, which involved in full-time positions.
I think, I think I probably did not, I did not describe.
So you got the second part out.
I described care physician.
Yeah.
So, so that was one, that was one position, but it was a, there's fourteen positions I described above, I did not describe one of them. But there are fifteen new.
So it is fifteen positions that should have been described above.
Right.
And an additional three full-time positions that were part-time positions, which evolved into full-time.
Yes.
But I only had to pay for fourteen point three. That's, that's all I care about.
I believe you.
Forty-five minutes later. We got there, didn't we?
Struggling to not have it myself.
Tell me what's perplexed.
No, I'm not perplexed, I just, when, when Mr. Williams is finished, I have a series.
We've covered the part of, you know, if you go look over on page sixteen.
Right.
The chart that you have right there, you know, underneath the first paragraph, where we're talking about the projects, okay? And you're, we're showing how we're funding them, and from the general fund, it's, you know, approximately nine point eight million dollars. We have an amount of money that you're projecting that will be, you know, in excess of fund balance.
To, based on what we're going to leave it.
Okay. Before we read that, Mr. Williams, since we're talking about that. This is a CIP. You've changed the definition of the CIP, okay, and you haven't, right, okay? We need to have some agreement on whether that's, okay? Because you push, I mean, when you push vehicles in there, they don't meet our CIP definition.
They have that cash.
And we put, we put roads in there, that's not, okay, so, I don't really care, okay? So we need to have a common understanding of what can go in the CIP. In the past, we took vehicles, mainly leasing, and we were dropping them as a subcategory, which, which is okay. But I just need to know what our definition of the CIP is going to be.
Let me, if I may, Matt, Charlotte, I may not wrong, but didn't we have as far as fiscal policies, a description of what criteria were of going, or project, you're going to see up here, it's a dollar amount.
It's twenty-five thousand and has to have a useful life greater, one year greater, so that would be most vehicles.
I would think that would meet the vehicles.
Yeah, most are vehicles now, but.
But we, we purposely excluded vehicles, so I don't, I don't care, I just, I want to know what the definition is, that's all.
We called it an other capital program, so that you had your construction, and that's the CIP, and then a list of vehicles as our other capital.
Going back to, you know, his question, Mr. Cox's question, vehicles we release and that counted against our debt.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and when I got with you to see if we started to page your goal, what impact it would have on our desire to give back to twelve percent as soon as possible and negligible effect.
I think in that early, in the early phase probably, but I think, looking at the, the model, the way that Mr. Schrader has done it, I think it does help us get there, especially when you start looking at the fire apparatus leases, because they're the large ones.
But, just real, real, real question, like, real quickly. Now that we're doing the page you got, do they belong in the CIP?
I would prefer to budget them in the Capital Projects Fund, but whether we would put them in our CIP book, that's, that discussion, I guess, we could have as far as.
When you say Capital Projects Fund, are you talking about a capital maintenance reserve fund?
No, just, it's a fund in our, in, that's where, when we, even when you guys adopt your CIP and decide which projects you want to appropriate, I put them in the Fund, the Fund Three-O-One, which is the Capital Projects Fund, and it helps, for me, it helps with your end fixed asset reporting and puts all the large items in one place versus putting it in the general fund.
The Capital Projects, I'm making a change, I'm sure, at the same time, I understand. So this fund, where does that show up? Does it show up in the undesignated fund balance, you know, like Capital Reserve Fund, you know, what we've got the, you know?
The transfer comes out of the general fund and goes into the Capital Projects Fund, so in essence, it comes out of the assigned capital maintenance. Correct, in the past, it's come out of the assigned capital maintenance reserve funds, so we make a transfer from there into the Capital Projects to fund any other projects that you.
Definition is on page seven of the Capital Projects Fund, okay?
For the modeling, though, wouldn't it be easier to have it in the CIP? I mean, it is, it is, I mean, that, that's the reason.
And it's always, it's coming out of our general fund pocket and going towards the capital assets.
Right, so for me, if you want to do the modeling, I would put it, personally, I would keep it in this. Yeah.
But the Capital Projects Fund, but in here, says it does not include, says most non-educational county facilities, and we've got education in our CIP, which is then part of Capital Projects Fund, right?
I'd like to change, I think, I, I, I just did what I thought was common, common sense.
So education is in it?
Education, yeah, we've got all the schools in here.
Okay, but I mean, this says it's not.
Yeah, that's not my letter, that's the, that's our guidelines, right? That's the definition you're providing.
Right.
Well, Charlotte, you all make a note to.
Change that.
Yeah, straight down.
That would be good, I think it's nice to have one-stop shopping, it's either coming out of general fund budget or coming out of capital budget. Literally split the capital budget up into groups.
It just keeps it's clear.
Oh, with, on page sixteen, with that CIP. Roads are totally different. Because we're, we're never going to, we're funding roads in a totally different way, is that? Is that help, I don't see that as helpful to have that as part of the tenure total. I, I see it's neat to be shown, don't get me wrong.
I, I do. And the reason me is.
The money's going to come in.
Correct.
Okay, from the Transportation Authority, and we're probably going to bundle that with something else.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not. It just doesn't.
It's weird, because this is actually money you're getting in as opposed to taking, so it's kind of a convoluted way of looking at it. You know, the fourteen nine oh three is actually positive, when most everything else in this is a negative.
Correct, so fourteen million is, eighty-two is, fourteen million is part of the eighty-two, it's really not eighty-two.
You're correct.
Right.
You're a hundred percent correct, yes, yes.
That's, the credits and the debits are.
It's a credit. Yeah, you're absolutely.
That's my problem.
But the, the thing is, is if we want to get, I, this is what I heard from a planning tool, that if we want to.
Proper.
Proppers, you need to have it in your CIP, so how that.
We had a CIP before, we had a CIP before that had about three different levels.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Okay, and so that's, yeah, it's got to be accounted for.
Yeah, and I know what you're saying, because it, it, it makes your number look worse than it is.
I hope so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You know, I think you do see road projects in CIP, for, you know, in locality, to do it on roads, like, right, for maintenance on roads, and you'll see road price allocated throughout their CIP, potentially in the same way, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm. But, yeah, the same way, but whatever you want to do on that, it's.
Well, I don't care, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get an understanding and a methodology that makes sense, and then I can remember.
Well, it certainly goes against the grain, because this money come in.
Coming in.
We're not expending it out.
It's so hard to track it off.
Well, it does, it says, there's a use of general fund money, it transfers all outside of money. Just like borrowing money, I mean, with, with borrowing, we showed debt service or grants, I mean.
Right.
Our communication system has grants, and we showed those in our CIP, we also reduced, out-of-pocket expenses were reduced by a grant amount. So we do have revenue items, not many of it, but in our CIP that are grant-related. This, this one, I consider it's a grant.
But the CIP for proper is not about the money coming in, it's about projects we show in the CIP.
You're right.
I, 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 I agree with you, I don't think it's, you know, it needs to go somewhere else.
So where do we put it?
We have a sub-toll. We could, we could make it a third sub-toll, just like we have, we don't.
With the grants?
We've got a grant somewhere here.
We have a CIP that had sub-tolls.
Right.
Underneath, okay, where we had leased vehicles and stuff like that. Then you finally had a toll, a grant toll at the bottom.
It was still eighty-two seven, but the first, you know.
Right.
Right. That'd be fine.
More clarity to it, more, I, I would call it transparency, because this gets a little bit misleading here, but it's not, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I didn't know, I added that late, because I felt like it's a CIP that didn't mention this large number, but also.
It means it came in late.
It needs to be accounted for, I got no problem.
Okay. Sorry, I interrupted you, David.
Here's a question, page eighteen. All right. We're showing. Down at the bottom, operating transfers. Uses of fund balance, can you explain those two?
Sure.
You know, just real quick, you know, make sure I understand.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's pick a, a number, two thousand twenty, or use for example.
What's your two twenty, twenty twenty-two proposal?
Twenty twenty-two, the eleven, five seventy-two operating transfer would include the money that's, that you just looked at for previous paid money coming out of our pocket for CIP, which is nine million eight. Plus, the debts, the transfer to utility system, which is the difference, so, we're talking about the nine million eight plus.
So that's the nine eight that we see for the, for the capital product.
Right, plus utilities transfers.
I just need to know how you got, how you built that number, right?
Now, when I, when I go a bit to, for the confusion, when I show you the model of debt service numbers here, I include utility debt service in our debt service, so we look at our ratios, it's included. But when we get to the budget time, we pull out the debt service and show that as a transfer, not as a debt service number.
So, going down right underneath that, uses of fund balance, five point three million.
Yes, so in this, in this scenario, we're, we're proposing, just in the model you're seeing, we're building up a significant fund balance back, getting back to twenty-one, we build up, that's how we got this chart, I'm showing you now, that's probably in the figure, surplus about, I'm projecting in twenty-one, I'm projecting in the proposed budget, that we draw that fund balance down by five million.
Don't leave that page. All right. Where's cares?
There's the special revenue fund.
Uh, where?
The special revenue fund, a department, a department's document, that's all, that's our, we have grants, we have, we don't have, we don't include that.
Okay, so, go back, where's cares? Where's cares, and where?
Where is it, where is it living, what fund?
Yeah, what is it, where on the fund?
The money's, the five million one's in the special revenue fund, and they're state federal grants.
Okay.
And it, it shows, the five million one coming in over two years, you'll see when I get the checks for this going out, but it's not part of the general fund or the school's.
So I don't, I can't look at the expenditures, how much, so I can't tell how much we have in the cares fund right now?
From this time.
Okay, is there any, I understand this is a budget, are there, are there other documents that show that?
Yes, yes.
What do I find?
I shall be, I'm ready.
There's a lot more that's been in there before cares act ever come into play, because all your grant money would have been in that area before.
Yeah.
Right? It's never been in the budget before.
No, it's just, it's, cares is just like the rest of grants.
Right, is your money coming in?
At, at five million one, we've allocated, we've spent and allocated every, every dime of it today, so.
We spent it, but we have no money left in cares.
We have no, we have documented expenditures all of it, all five million one.
So why were you and I talking about what we were going to do with broad bands?
We have, I, we talked about that, I showed you, it, uh, it's, uh.
Okay.
One thing with the budget.
I'll show you the follow-up.
You probably don't put it in here, because it's an unpredictable, I mean, I guess all is unpredictable.
Well, the five million one, the extent, we've already, we've allocated a lot of that cost to the sheriff's debt and salaries, for example. And, and we reimburse ourselves for that.
So then, we'll, 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 we'll get, we'll get to that.
There's no money out there that, that we're saying, we're looking for places to spend. Okay, we got, we got.
It's all been accounted for.
It was all from a federal government standpoint, we've documented every dime they gave us, and it's just now.
Again, this is, so make sure I understand. Go down to the bottom, you know, and I'm looking at the FY twenty twenty-one adopted budget. There was a budget, you know, where we said approximately eighty-six million dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's another transfer, that's right. Or some of the top you're showing. An amount per budget is a larger amount, but then we show underneath where, you know, we're netting out the transfer.
Yeah, and we're widening, we're widening the umbrella. The previous page was way in from page eighteen, was just gold, general fund, general fund. When we get over to the page twenty, umbrella's wide to include water, sewer, capital projects, schools. So it's a bigger, it's a bigger umbrella here on page twenty than it was on page eighteen, as far as the number of funds we're trying to document here.
Where I'm going with that, so somebody, you know, in the community wanted to understand their budget. And they want to actually look at, you know, how much we budgeted year over year, what number do they look at, and where do they go?
My, my suggestion is page eighteen. Is that, that is the whole of the, that's the, that the high budget for this board, the general fund, schools, social services, all rolled up in the one presentation. Can we get away from the other funds, uh, capital projects fund, utilities fund? I think it's, make sure I understand your question, are you asking, what would you think would be the valuable schedule for the public to look at as far as?
Well, if they wanted to look at and try to track, you know, where our budget is today. What has been in previous years? Which page should they go to?
I would go to eighteen.
We're going to twenty-one.
That's again, it's all funds, so that rolls into play, Charlotte, you don't mind, tell me what funds is it, is it, you notice the total expenditures on page twenty-one is eighty-five million, hundred and six.
Correct, and that's what I thought our budget was.
And if you look at, uh, that's for twenty-one, you look at page eighteen, it's only eighty-one million. So, and finally, it includes other funds, and they are.
Fire and rescue, the utilities fund, utilities capital projects, and the capital projects fund.
That's a larger looking accounting, that's gets away from the tax base, tax use of, you know, the tax office, this is everything, including water, sewer. Fire fund, and page eighteen is just where your tax office is.
Okay, but the water sewer fund, you know, we're actually having to do transfers in to take that, so that's, that's a cost.
And that's on page eighteen, we got that big party transfer out, and we're only eleven million.
Again, I'm trying to get you, where is the best place to go to look to see what we're doing in this county with the budget? Maybe I'll simplify.
No, I, I agree, I, I added, eighteen is the schedule we have used in the past, because I thought it was a clearer summary of what, what people would want to look at. Because I, I get confused when I start blending the other funds into, that don't have tax abuse, that have other resources. When I start considering that, it's like, like the fire and rescue fund, it's, it's no general fund money going to fire and rescue, Charlotte, that's correct. Yeah, so that's, that's away from our budget.
That's the service, you know, we're transferring.
So I, I thought it was a more simplistic way of looking at it from, from our standpoint, strip out the things that we don't, we're not wrestling with as a budget. And just the.
But with the utility fund. Uh, we take in any hookup piece, and we're putting that for future infrastructure, okay?
We haven't, we haven't been doing that.
Yeah.
We're still not doing it?
No. The fund, you can, you can look at the fund, it didn't grow.
All right, but where I'm going with it, you know, goes back to Mrs. Carmax's issue of subsidizing, okay? The money's coming from somewhere, and we're transferring money in to that utility fund, correct? And that's coming from revenues that we generate here in account.
Right. It's part, it's part of that number on page eighteen, and I transfer to their.
From real estate taxes, right? It's coming from real estate, I mean, that's the big difference between eighteen and twenty. Eighteen is, is real estate tax money. Right?
That's why I'm, I'm, it's general revenue money.
Yeah.
As opposed to out to third party money.
Right.
Uh, it's one way to look at it. But, we, good news, as you told me.
But can I get an answer to my question about the utility fund?
Yeah.
Because again, the money has to come from somewhere to get into the utility fund to pay for, you know, pay debt.
Comes from the general fund.
Comes from the general.
Right.
Yeah.
And it, it is about, it's about, second from the bottom line on page eighteen.
Okay.
Eleven million five seventy-two is nine million eight in CIP, plus a million seven to go to utilities.
So million sevens.
Is.
Is what the taxpayers are, are subsidizing.
Exactly.
The utilities, the water and sewer in Palatine County, that's up and down Route Six. It's subsidized to the tune of one point seven million dollars by the taxpayers every year. And if my memory's right, there's fifteen more years of that to go.
You have two components to that, is that right, Charles, fifteen more years?
Yeah.
Fifteen more years paying on, on the, on the water and sewer?
Yeah, I think so.
But you have two components to that, Mike. You have debt, okay, and we also have an operating loss, the operating.
You got expense, you got operating.
Yeah, just, okay, but debt we can't impact, we're still about two pennies short on the operating.
So the million seven is made up about a million, less than a million three in debt service, and about four hundred thousand in operating costs.
Right.
But this is where your point about the connection fees, which, the reason we're only able to get by with just four hundred thousand dollars of operating costs, is because we're using our connection fees now to get it fixed.
I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but I was told that we weren't doing that anymore, I'll leave, we'll have that. Page twenty-one. Uh, at the top, it looks like we're looking at dollar change and revenues, we're looking at nine point one million increase in revenues. Ten point six increase. Then I go down to the bottom and total expenditures. Uh, fourteen point four million. Expenditures going up sixteen point eight percent.
Again, that's got, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That's got capital projects, the total capital projects, so that's, that compare, I mean, again, back to page eighteen. You strip out the other funds, and just look at general, I mean, expenditures here, page eighteen shows they'll go up about four and a half percent. Plus the out pay transfer by eleven, so. Well, I'm just, it's part of the management. I, I just think it's, I think it's a little confusing when you look at all funds numbers and blend these other pieces in. That's why I started page eighteen up front.
Well, eighteen breaks it out for you, so that you're able to understand these figures, like I just, you know, went to the bottom of each one of the categories, revenues and expenditures. And I saw where revenues were less than expenditures, so.
Yes.
Uh, let's not weave that. No matter which page you look at, it's just a magnitude, we are planning to grow our expenditures significantly more than our revenues.
Five point three million.
Okay, so why is that a good idea?
I mean, obviously, it's a CIP driven idea.
But why, but why is it a good idea? That seems to me to be one of Billy's known, okay, spend faster than I'm, than I'm earning.
Well, the flip side would be, if you save the money in this year twenty-one.
But just break even. Save money, just spend money at the same level, okay, then I'm taking it in.
And that's, you mentioned to me another meeting, you're saying you got money for hopefully years ago at school. They put money in one pocket and built it up for five, ten years, and then pulled out that pocket and spent it. And it's kind of the same with this budget here, we put money in our pocket this year twenty-one, and this proposal shows the spending in twenty-two. How do you save your money?
Let's, let's, let me, I'm, because I'm, now we'll get into where I'm just totally confused, okay? Would you put slide four? Uh, this is, of course, all adopted twenty twenty-one, we got no real information on what we've done in twenty-one. Okay, this is against the budget, not against the reality of spending. Okay, that's what this chart says, I asked for twenty twenty-one information and got. You, you've got to kill yours. Okay, so fortunately, Mr. Smith provided it for me. Okay, so here is FY twenty-one projected expenditures and revenues from the model, and model's got to do it. All right, we'll go to slide five. So I took that number and I put it on twenty-one, page twenty-one. We'll, we'll see what that looks like, and then the Smith can tell me that I've added an apple and an orange and a pear, and I probably have. Okay, so here we are from the model, the FY twenty twenty-one adopted for revenues is eighty-eight million bucks. And that's from the model, just pull it straight over, which is significantly more than adopted, that doesn't surprise anybody. Okay, with conservative revenue, so that says that we're going to grow our revenue change eight percent, not ten point six. Based on FYI twenty-one projected, now we go down to the bottom. And when you say projected, you're talking about projecting forward? The total, area in twenty twenty-one, okay, came from the model.
We would be projecting, um, April, May, June.
That's why, that's why I was going.
Yeah, so we're project, projecting, what you're missing is ninety days.
Well, we're, we're projecting. That's why I wanted to make sure, right, Mr. Bob, yeah, what was the amount that we were projecting? Okay, so now, let's go down, let's go down to expenditures, and from the model, it says that we are going to be at eighty-one million. Okay, a actually, a ten, eleven percent reduction over our model, excuse me, over our budget. Most of that probably is accounted for because of cares. We've just shifted some sheriff stuff into it, we've shifted some other things in. What this says is interesting, if these numbers are reasonably correct. And I can't see them, I'm sorry, okay, uh, it is the. Look at page twenty-one, David.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, look up top for FY twenty twenty-one adopted.
Got it.
Okay? Based on the model is eighty-eight million, not eighty-five million. So that was, we, we adopted a budget, okay, which we knew was conservative, and rather than eighty, it's roughly eighty-six million, it's coming in at eighty-eight million. Okay, go down at the bottom, total expenditures. The, our budget was eighty-six million, and the model says it's going to come in at eighty-one million. A eleven point three percent decrease. So, uh, that then, of course, means that the increase. For FY twenty twenty-two is not sixteen point eight, it's twenty-three point seven. Now. Um, fascinating, that says that we created a budget. That reduced the tax rate by three cents, reduced county spending by eleven percent, and we've got a cushion of money to spend in our fund balances we've never had before. Something's wrong with that, it's not that easy.
It, it, it really was wrong with it, we should never have put that page in, because.
No, 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 I like that page.
No, because you're looking at local funds, so you, if you look at page eighteen, and compared your eighty, your eighty-one million dollar forecast to the, to the number on page eighteen, you would have seen eighty-one million compared to eighty-one million as opposed to eighty-one million instead of eighty-five million.
Okay, you're saying, well, that's that, why, why won't you give me twenty twenty-one projected numbers for everything, so I can understand this?
I've got it in here. It's on page eighteen.
You've got FYI twenty twenty-one adopted, not FYI twenty-one, okay, I want to know what our projections for year end, because you can see there's a major difference.
The sheet I sent you, you should put it up first, was, that's where you got eighty-one million from, that's, that's my projection, I think, that was this year twenty-one.
But I, 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 so I'm just totally confused, okay? Are we coming out with a budget that's ten percent less than what we projected?
Chase, if you could put this previous slide up, you don't mind, the first one we started with.
I told you I didn't.
That's okay, it's just, these schedules are, the way we're, we're, we're trying to show you these, these levels for appropriation purposes. But for discussion purposes, I put page eighteen in there because it's really the one, yeah, the one that's got us brought. For discussion purposes, it's confusing, uh, so. Here's, here's my projected eighteen for two thousand twenty-one results, that's how we would go to the surplus of twenty-one. And I'm expecting eighty-one million, one six three expenditures. That, uh, that, that is what it is.
Pull that up, yeah.
Yeah, not much.
I could do it on my side. Yeah. So, if you compare this to your adopted budget for twenty-one, it's on page eighteen. I'm projecting eighty-one point one million to be spent, and we adopted a budget of eighty-three point three million.
Okay, so it's two million dollars.
Two million dollars savings.
Okay, two million dollars to the good.
To the good, and then on the expenditure side, revenue side, I'm projecting eighty-eight million for twenty-one, and we projected eighty-one million. Seven million to be there. So you're projecting, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, wait, eighty-eight million, eighty-eight million on revenue projection, my page eighteen shows eight, three million, so it's about a five, four and a half million dollar.
Okay.
Revenue surplus.
And then, so your expenditure total on here is eighty-one million, and on here it's eighty-one million, okay, okay, so.
West End, yeah. That was, that was a budget to have.
So when you really look at this, Palatine County, based upon the budget last year, has six point six million dollars of surplus sitting in the bank that they collected from the taxpayers over the past year.
We think that's a good collection.
Yeah, project, Bill talks about projections. When you finish, you, you, you got six point six million dollars surplus money in the county, based upon the budget that was approved last year.
And we offset by the transfer.
Yep.
I'm projecting a five point nine million dollar surplus.
And we historically run a two million dollar surplus.
Right.
Now, I understand six point six versus two, five point five versus two million.
I'm, I'm sorry, we put these numbers in there because for a board version, we need to, but I think, the reason I put eighteen in there was to clean it up.
And this is based on eighty-three cents for the second quarter, for the second payment. Uh, yes.
Yes.
June, June eighty-three cents.
It does, for six months.
I'm sorry, I interrupted, you got my, I got my page twenty-one resolved.
I've got eighty pages to go through.
Good, good. Great.
Yeah, great.
Next year, shoot.
Cut him off.
Good to see you here today. So, this way you went through? I'm, I'm done?
Chase, we got it.
Alright, thanks. My gets off her phone.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just, yeah, alright, right.
Time up?
Yep.
Okay, uh, page nine. This question, we, we show fiduciary funds, bond escrow, that's where we're keeping money that we have borrowed but not spent? That what bond escrow stands for?
Those are actually, it's really, we call it bond escrow, but it's really performance bonds, so when someone has to meet a wetlands or some kind of, I don't, I'm only speaking a little bit, we're talking about.
So.
They have to pay a performance bond, it sits in that fund until they've met the requirements and then we write it back to them.
I'd like to go to page 15. And I need slide two. And I'd like to talk about the building inspection.
Which slide?
Two, we're gonna go to two and then three. That's not two. There we go. Building department, that's it. Uh, in your 2021 budget, it has a description of every department, their goals and what they're doing, and so. Uh, this says that, um, building inspection department down at the bottom says they have targets. Uh, lower the permit issuance time to 10 business days or less, do we know what it is?
We know it's at 10.
It's not 10.
Well, no, but do we know what it is? Where I'm going is, uh, you know, this is, if we want to talk about permits or stuff like that, we've got to have, we've got to have some targets, we've got to have something that we're looking at, where we are today and where we're trying to go. And all I've heard is, wow, we got a problem. Okay, so this is, there were a lot of permits, 10 business days or less. Okay, did they not, and where are they?
They did not. Uh, David, are you online?
Yes, I'm here.
So, right, right now, uh, it goes to get 10 days or less for the last, last budget season. You're, you're, you're stretched out to what, what range now?
Uh, currently we're at 19 business days.
And is that, how, how are you six months, in other words, how has that progressed over the last 12 months? You got that, maybe, has it been a disintegrating process or is it?
It will, it kind of varies greatly, um, due to what is dropped off for acceptance.
We'll go to the next page, this will help. Can I ask a question, Sheriff? He's on there, right, David, you're there?
Yes, I am.
The, the number that's up here from the previous year's book that Mr. Cox was referring to has 10 days. What is a, what is in your mind, uh, it is your department, that would be a good measurable for us to, to be looking at, considering, and personally speaking, and I'm not even sure, I want to be looking at it and speaking to maybe Mr. Smithers. The, um, but in your mind, what, what's the day, the number of days to issue a permit?
Ideally, I would like for it to be around five business days, um, and that would come with more staff being hired.
Five.
Five business days, okay. Okay, well, I don't think you have to convince us that you want more people. You don't have to do that, but, uh, is five business days, is that a realistic number? I mean, I'm not one of those that would like to compare us to everybody else, but i- is it, is it a realistic business, a realistic timeframe to issue a permit when we have, and we're talking about building permits, but we have just, I don't know, 14 pages of permits, right? Chase, can we go to the next page? Thank you, David, there, there you are.
You're welcome.
Numbers, but one of the things I'm interested in is at the bottom, it said the building department was the first winner for the PEC Con test. Uh, that will allow, uh, online payments, uh, once implemented to the treasurer's office, did we do that? And what was the impact if we did?
And we definitely had a ERP system, a D R P system.
Well, this, this said, I mean, one of the goals was implemented in 2021. What do we implement in 2021?
So. Dave, you're taking, you're taking credit card payments at your counter now, right?
Yes, we, we're processing credit card forms and then we send it down the hallway to be paid. Uh, we tried to set up a one, uh, online portal payment, but the system that we are currently operating on, um, I think it does not really fare well to have that with the treasurer's department right now.
But we're working on that, we're all on the same page on, on, on getting that installed, that new ERP.
So, you know, that worked or it didn't work, but what I need to evaluate this is where are we? What are we trying to accomplish and is the answer really people? Doesn't have to be people.
I, you know, my opinion, it is people, in this case, it doesn't have to be five people, we could put five people into it, it, that would be the smart answer, but I think these two.
Yeah, but, but, we don't have, we don't have a target.
What do you mean, we just talked about one.
So we make this up on the fly?
No, David, we had ten in it last year, and David's saying we can do better than that.
Yeah, I, I, without, without some type of indices, without some information, some real information, what we're trying to accomplish, where we are today, what's happening with, what's coming in, I want some numbers, that's all.
But, Don Tanner Jack, why are we doing this to the building department and not sheriff's office and not, you know what I mean? It's like we're, we're digging into, I see what you're saying, we're digging into the building department, but we're not, okay, why are we?
No, that's one of those, they want to be, they want to be where we department, you want sheriff's department in there.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but, you know, I, I don't think that's too neat for our levels, what I'm saying.
Because, to answer your question, because this said, okay, we have a permit problem, okay? So we don't know what, we haven't defined the problem, we haven't defined the target, but we find the solution. That's all, okay? And I just, you know, what are we, how will we know? Well, we've achieved, you know, we don't have a goal stated, it's not in here, okay, we just heard one. But it's not in here in terms of justification, how do we know that we've achieved with adding one person? How do we know that we've achieved what we're trying to accomplish unless we have specific goals and specific understanding of what's going on? How many, how many permits of different types can one person turn around? And there's a whole series of questions that I don't have any information.
Well, one thing that we do know is that if that book is from our budget, right? FY 21, is that what that is? Is that FY 21 that you read now?
No, yes, this is FY, this is FY.
Okay, so our number was 10 per day.
No, that, that was a goal in there, someone put in, I don't know what's with it.
That's a budget, that's FY 21, that's a budget that we did. Um, so if the goal, the target was 10, 10 per day.
10 per day or 10 days?
I mean, 10, 10.
Business days to turn it around.
Yeah.
This is, what's it say, 10?
Uh, lower permit issuance to 10 business days or less.
10 business days or less, and we're at 19, we're failed, we failed. We're, we're, we're failed. So when the director of the department says that he would like to be at five, that's even more aggressive than that. But follows it up with, we need employees. I'm not a building inspector, I'm not a permanent life, I'm not a planning and zoning person. But I listen to these people that we've hired to be the experts and we take the information from them. And then we can go, we're going to change a policy at that point, but to me, it sounds like if that guy is head of our department, if he's given us this information, I'm not disagreeing with you that it should be out here in life, we should know what it is. We just heard that, of, of where he's at.
What I'm interested in is not, we have a problem, I need a body, which is what I've heard, okay? I'm interested in, okay, so 2291 in terms of total permits has gone to 4,000 or whatever, okay? And this is what we should expect a person to do, we don't have enough people, this is where we're trying to boot, okay? Uh, that's generally better done than we'll put somebody on the spot on a, on a conference call kind of thing. So I want, I just want to see a plan that has, has some.
I don't think he's on the spot, I think he does it every day, eight hours a day, so I don't think he's on the spot at all. And I think that probably there's been conversation between him and Mr. Smithers.
I just want to see, I just want to see the information, I don't.
And this is, this is roughly the page we provided with the book, it shows you, and getting the blue dotted line here shows you our staffing from 2004, and you can see, we ramped up right when the economy crashed back in 2008. And permits started going down because of the economy, we were, we had 10 bodies in place. We, and, and we, and then over time, we have downsized our staffing, you see the blue dotted line coming down to David's. Now it's five people in place, but you can see our permits from 2008 are almost double, more than doubled, at the same time our staff's been cut in half. It's just amazing that they were able to keep up to, to this point, based on what we're seeing here.
And this is permits in 2020 are dropping like a stone.
That's six months a year, now that's six.
I'm sorry, what is that?
Well, and we, we know the numbers, and it, uh, but this is, it shows you, David's had a, a proposal that we get back up to 2,000 to pre-recession levels. We're just trying to get back up to, and David's department, one more body, and then permits in our second one, we're trying to get back up to seven, you know, and it would still be all the way from getting to the permanent level that we had standing by before. And we're hoping that our technology, Mr. Cox, is one with the new system, is going to keep David, you know, at this level, if it's getting as efficient as we hope it will be. Technology, maybe he can stay at, at this level, at the two levels, but five is just brutal.
14.3 FTEs is brutal. Yes, okay, that's brutal. And that's what you're asking in this question. And so, uh, I purposely want to examine, okay, and to understand, to be able to, when citizens of this county said, you're doing what? That's, that it'll be a little higher inflection. But it will be. Uh, and so, uh, our, our job is to make sure that we absolutely capture what we do, and we've got to fund it, I don't have any problems with that. But I don't have any, I got a squiggly chart, uh, which, you know, says it's dropping like a stone on 20, you tell me it's not, well, no, it's not really right. Okay, I don't have any numbers, uh, that correspond with, uh, permits and people like this. And so I just, I need more information, okay, if, if, if I'm going to vote for that. I, I've already told you, I found it very difficult, we're talking at that point about 20 people. So that's, that's the long and short of it, this description that's in our budget manual does not give me confidence that I need to vote for it, that's all, okay? This description that's in our budget manual does not give me confidence that I need to vote for it, that's all, okay? I don't know that it's bad, it may be great, I, I just don't know. Next one is, I'm into C I P, okay? And, oh, I've gone all the way over to eighty-four and eight, pages eighty-four and eighty-five. The actual listing of projects. And I have questions about a number of, um, in the parks and wrecked area, the second one down athletic field improvements lighting. It's a half million dollars. Uh, that's, uh, P R double O twenty-seven. That's landmark center. We don't own that and we don't have a lease for it. So why are we spending a half million dollars on the school's properties?
This is Carter, if you're on the line, if you don't mind, if you need to give us some background on that property and why we, I think they've got some, uh, facilities are a little bit dangerous for our public.
But why aren't the schools fixing them?
Well, we use them, it's our, it's our project. We run a parks wreck out of that facility, so.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go, let's drop it back, okay? Why are, why are we, we don't own it? Why aren't they taking care of? I understand it needs to be fixed, I guess.
Yeah, in, in my opinion, we is, we is ours. So it's, if, if it's broken, i- i- we need to get a management school order, they can fix it.
It's come from us.
They control a lot. No, they got, they got almost nine hundred thousand dollars sitting in their capital management reserve room.
Yeah.
They can, they have money to fix it.
But that's, that's a strategy while we're, we're, we're treating it like a parking lot.
I mean, we, we would finally shop us, shot the landmark center and gave it back to them. It's out of our C I P. When we didn't own it in the first place, it never should have been discussing. The second one in here, uh, is also, uh, the Pocahontas Landmark Center Parking Improvements. That's eighty-five thousand, same sort of thing. Why are we doing that to their property? And do they want us to do that? Are they going to tear it down? You know, this, this, because it's not ours and it's not under our control. Those are my questions, okay?
Good question. In fact, in fact, you're right, I'm thinking of it, I believe.
So I, I mean, there, there may be wonderful explanations, I just don't know them. Uh, the next one, uh, is under Parks and Rec, the softball concession complex. At three, the only, the only C I P items I'm looking at are those that impact this, this year, okay? None, you know, none, none for this year. Uh, three hundred fifteen thousand dollars in softball concession. I am, I am not, I am sorry, I am not comfortable with that number.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, the project is fine.
Wasn't it a higher number before?
It was, it was like five hundred.
Yep, yep.
So you want the other number?
Something less than the cost of a house, how about?
So is it consistent to pull that out or delay it?
Uh, I just want to, it's the number that strikes me as being out of whack. But don't.
Um, no, I, I can give some, I can give some help on that as far as, I think we have gotten some pricing on that, unless you pick it up till later, you know, like.
I bet.
We can talk about it now.
So?
Talk about it now as well.
Uh, Ms. Carter, I think you just researched on it, on that cost of that, the three hundred fifteen thousand dollar estimate. Uh, part of it had to do with access to water or, uh, if you got, tell us a little bit more about what you, that price, if you don't mind.
Um, yeah, actually, uh, some of it had to do with, um, connecting to, uh, the sewer because it has to be pumped up to the administration building. So some of that cost, but the majority of it was actually in the construction. So we, um, we did get pricing from, uh, Mr. Tibbs on the concession standup we built at the new junior high school. And that was right around three hundred thousand and it was bare bones. It didn't have, um, the range hood and they actually cannot cook in that facility. They can just sell pre-made food. So a lot of that cost was in the, the bathroom facilities because it's commercial grade. Um, and we also did get pricing for a similar sized concession slash bathroom, um, in Henrico and theirs was, uh, five hundred thousand plus. That's, that is where the original number came from. Um, but so we're.
One of the, one of the part of the three hundred fifteen thousand would you allocate to the sewer connection?
Uh, because it's got a pump station, I would say probably fifty thousand of that. Although we don't, we didn't break it out like that, but.
Can we put it in another location to them?
Uh, you mean another, um, another location on the property? Um, all of that property has to be pumped up to the sewer because it's, it's lower down. So anywhere we located that on that property would require that.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Smith, that didn't take me very far.
Yeah, no, I think after we've got two hundred sixty thousand dollars, that's there, so.
I mean, I, my, one of my questions would be, what, what can you build for a hundred thousand dollars? Show me. I mean, that, that doesn't get you anywhere either, okay? But so, but I like your question. Okay, but I'm going to tell you what I'm thinking. We, we, we put to the, to the scags, right? We put two hundred thousand more, actually, I think we put maybe four hundred plus thousand more into that bill as we refurbished and remodeled and all that. The money just keeps getting, you know, out there and out. I like your questions and, and I, I remember the conversations of the concession stands and five hundred, this is great, like parking lots for four hundred and eighty thousand. So I like the questions, but what I do, what I know about that particular concession stand, I think, is that it's at Turner Field, right? When the, Ms. Carter's on it, and there's a, there's a distance there. And I think that, I don't think, I know the concession stand that's there, we need to do something because it was built, um, before dirt goes in that. It, it, it's, it's terrible. I mean, it's not, I don't even know how we can cook anything in there and don't have the health department coming out. I'm serious. Um, if you're going to look at it, you'll see real quick. But I don't know if three fifteen is the right number.
I don't have any, I don't have any problem with, we, we need.
Doing it, right? But let's make sure we're not doing three fifteen if we can do it for two sixty-five.
Or one fifty or whatever the number.
Right, whatever that number, I, I agree with. Um, the next one is public safety. Uh, and it's the L M R mobile phones for me and one and the upgrade, uh, software for two hundred seventy-one thousand. Okay. Mr. Nolan continues to come back for more money, okay? It's just that simple. I want to know, I want to go back and find out, we, we gave him ten million plus, okay? And that was based on a budget of things that we wanted to do. Why are we, first question, why do we have these significant costs? Why weren't those included originally? And two, what else is, what else is waiting for me, okay? Okay, I won't, I want to feel comfortable that we finally understand the total cost of all of this. And that's, that's, I, we want to spend some money, I got no problem with it, okay?
But you want to know how much we've spent, spent since inception of this project?
Yep.
For the new system.
Versus, versus the budget.
Versus the budget.
Okay, so we missed, we missed it, the budget. And what else is sitting out there?
Yeah, and, and you, Mr. Cox, you know, before, I, I thought, I mean, Tom inherited a contract for the system that he could have to try to keep us updated on, so.
Yeah, it's not Tom.
But we changed contractors.
Changed contractors, but he inherited the problem and he's talking this, and this is, our numbers now are. But that's fine, I, I want, I want to understand.
Yeah.
Because it just seems like he's at the trough continually, okay? And I want to understand that.
We'll give you history on that.
Okay. Must be a little hungry. And the very last one, uh, is on page eighty-five. And it is, I think, Mr. Williams' favorite project, uh, under public utilities. It's the waterline extension, uh, for forty thousand dollars, which we've determined has no real value.
Didn't really save us the, the amount of time that it was going to take to make up the difference. It wasn't really.
I mean, but, it was going to take us fifteen years, fifteen, fifteen years.
Sorry, that, that, I, I, I mean, it was out of my mind. I didn't realize.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gone.
Okay.
It is now, it's supposed to be.
Okay.
And I missed.
I'm German, I'm finished.
Can we, um, dig into the apparatus, the ten million, six hundred forty thousand?
Yes, uh, for fire?
Where, where are you?
Uh, page eighty-four.
Yeah.
Chief, water here in the building, you're not allowed to come back to rejoice.
That's pretty big shock.
It, it is, you put together PowerPoint. Uh, part of what I added to your package today was a little background on the age of equipment, on mileage, hours. And also had a, a list of the replacement schedule that, uh, you could get us as part of the budget. So today you put together a PowerPoint presentation that we can go through, but if you have any questions or questions about these equipment, we can go right to that piece of equipment or we just go to the general presentation.
Probably general presentation.
I bet you you're running up the steps at the speed. Your door.
There's the door.
Best move.
He's back.
Do you want to mouse, you want me to take you?
I have a few questions. Buzz on through. So, just wanted to do a quick presentation on, on what we are. The backbone of our fleet, our fire engine, put out fires, tankers, and that haul of water. We have five of each that stay at primary and one in each vehicles. We have five brush trucks, which are, uh, you know, during brush season, which started this month and then run through the, uh, for the next two months. Primary for getting off road and attacking smaller fires in the woods. EMS vehicles, which are first responders, that, uh, are arrival scene typically prior to an ambulance arrival and for aid until a transport member arrives. We have six, or ambulances, which transport patients to the hospital, which are seventy percent of our work. And then we have a ladder truck and heavy rescue ladder truck, it's obviously for tall buildings and elevator master strings and a heavy rescue, which is our primary vehicle extra patient, uh, tool that we have in, that goes all over the county. And then we have states, eight staff vehicles. Couple of older reserves. And then, uh, we have a reserve tanker, which is sit, uh, and a reserve engine, uh, as backups. And both of them, they're, you know, one's nineteen ninety, one's a nineteen ninety-three model. And then we have a, a whole bunch of support trailers, employment command posts, light tower, shelter. A lot of, most of that stuff was purchased off grants and we, you know, as, uh, and we don't really have a big replacement plan for those, we expect them to last, uh, significant, significant amount of time.
Okay. What, what do, what do you expect to get out of your reserve tanker and engine?
When something breaks down a lot.
Okay.
So, so like right now, fire engine, those, fire engine at station one broke this morning, reserve engine goes in place. So we keep those.
That's your redundancy to make sure you can roll.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And, uh, and then our basic criteria, when you just look at it on the surface, is our staff vehicles. Uh, we do ten years and then we keep a couple as reserves for a little bit longer. Right now, our staff vehicle fleet is, is, is pretty old. Uh, it's not super high mileage, but it's, they're just, they're just older vehicles. I, I, my, mine is two thousand ten, right? It's not as, it doesn't really matter that much to me. Uh, it's, it goes on calls and that's fine, but it's, you know, it's time, at some point we just replace them. Uh, our fire engines, tankers, ladder trucks and heavy rescue, we would, we have, uh, we plan on replacing them in twenty years, we're kind of regardless of miles, miles and hours. And then twenty-five years, we want to move them on out of our system. And, and those aren't just arbitrary numbers, we'll talk a little bit more about it in another slide. And ambulances, because they are truly the workforce of our organization. And, uh, depending on which chassis that we have them on, is their life expectancy on mileage and hours. Because, uh, we typically, right now, our Chevy chassis have getting closer to the, if I'm honest, they can, across the void, they're getting close to four thousand hours on each. The miles are, uh, ranging on our Chevys, it's from, uh, one nineteen, hundred and nineteen thousand. Ones are just shy of that and ones end up just getting ready to hit a hundred thousand miles. Our Ram chassis, which is a Chrysler product, uh, it's a four-wheel drive ambulance and it's what the chassis we want to continue with in the future. A little more heavy duty and probably last a little longer, but we don't know yet because we just started purchasing them in twenty seventeen. Uh, but we forecast them to last a little bit. And then our brush units are really going to be, uh, on an as needs basis, I just put in a, a range because some of them may last longer than others, just depending on who made them, how well they're taken care of and, uh, and on down the line. And a couple of the, the additional considerations that we just don't look at the years, uh, but we look at excessive road miles, which typically hits our ambulances. A number of a, engine hours, which affects a couple of our fire engines and definitely our transport units, which are ambulances. And one of the things we'd like to work on in the future is that overall cost of maintenance and repair compared to the original price. Something we can't do because we just started working together with, uh, the transportation facility to where they keep our records. And, uh, that way, when, as time goes on, we can look at a particular unit and go, this one really costs a lot of money versus maybe it's twin that doesn't cost as much and help us make its better decisions in the future. And then whether the fire apparatus was manufactured on a custom or commercial chassis. So custom is, it's, it's a typical fire engine, square body that was handmade versus a freightliner or an international. Uh, there's a significant difference of life that we get out of our customs versus our commercial just because commercial chassis are typically built, just like our cars, Ford Chevys and whatever. They want you to buy more because they just built, they're just not built to last as long as something that's handmade to a, the custom fire manufacturer. And then this is one of the ones, the next one, the quality, design, and working ship and components used by the man, original manufacturer. We've had two of our manufacturers in my lifetime in Palatan that we got the last fire apparatus off their line and they went out of business for a reason because they didn't build quality. And so we really try to stick to buying now. We have really good people within our system that helps us make good decisions about future purchases on construction and design to where we're buying better quality because we want them to last as long as possible. And then, and just a few more other things. Next one, this one hurts us the, probably the most right now is availability of replacement parts. Our nineteen ninety Grumman fire engine, which is going to go up to station one as a reserve, was out for six months because we couldn't get a windshield. And, and, and that's, that's really hard for me to swallow, but I, when the windshield breaks and I just can't get one, it has to be specially made and ordered and then we wait six months to put it back in service. So that's, that's, and, and with those corresponds to the out of service time when the unit's being repaired or serviced. So those are, that's the age really becomes an issue. It's not the mileage, it's not the hour, it's the, it's just availability of stuff. And then over the course of time, uh, twenty years, there's a vast improvement in safety, anti-lock brakes, roller protection, improves warning lights and scene lighting on our apparatus because we want our folks safe, whether they're on the highway or at, at a house. And then, and a couple more quick items that we look at is the, obviously improved marking on highway safety. on highway safety. When we get to a scene on sixty or Route Two Eighty-Eight, when we set up, we want people to see us so they don't run over us. We've had one person already struck in the rear, a few deputies over the course of time on Two Eighty-Eight. And then when we're leaving the scene, because when we, when they're there for a while, traffic slows down, everything's fine. But when we get there and when we leave, we're really targets on the road and we want to make sure we're good business.
And one former chief.
Yes, he did. He gave us a little, little, let's go. Young guy. It does, uh, and then one of the things that's coming up that's going to affect all fire apparatus manufacturers is the twenty twenty-four EPA standard. The last couple of standards that affected the fire service industry when the EPA got involved, it, it was a significant impact per unit. It was like if you bought a fire engine, there was twenty to fifty thousand dollars increase in cost with that, with the R and D that goes into, uh, the standards that the EPA puts. So, you know, if we push, if we push purchases off, it's, it's just going to be, you know, we're just going to compound the pricing. So it's something that's taking effect. If you go back one slide, pull them in. One of the, there's the National Fire Protection Association standard, nineteen oh-one. Their recommendation, which is fifteen years of frontline service. And it's, uh, fire departments should seriously consider the value or risk to firefighters to keep a fire apparatus more than fifteen years in frontline service. Powtan, we, we maintain our apparatus well and we, we really, our goal is to keep them for twenty years and then move them into a reserve status. The, uh, also the standard across the nation is that twenty-five years, it should be replaced. Those, again, that's a consensus, that's a, that's a recommended, recommended standard. We exceed it by more than twenty years. So, uh, you know, it's, it's a risk versus reward and it's a balance between miles, hours, replacement parts, uh, out of service time. So it's a, it's a very delicate balance. And over the course of the years, the past boards have, have supported our twenty-year replacement. So that's kind of the highlights. The rest of the presentation is, if you kind of wanted to know what our staff vehicles look like versus a fire engine or whatever. Questions?
The part of the package we brought, put forth on me today when it came in was, uh, Chief Water was nice enough to send us a breakdown of all the vehicles, each station. Trying to see if I've got it on front of the desk. It also shows a request of, uh, vehicle replacement schedule to be provided as part of this budget that we've included in here to make sure. Uh, yes, and it's probably got it in its mail, I'm sure.
The, um, when we bought the ladder trucks, we bought used ones. And I believe our heavy replacement was used was enough.
Our heavy rescue was.
Heavy rescue. Is, is that proven to be a good strategy or not?
Yes and no. I think we, we made a core decision on our ladder truck. When we purchased it, the recommendation from the committee that looked at it was not to purchase it. So we, we purchased it at, at the request of, uh, a position higher than I was at the time. The heavy rescue, uh, I think we, we have made a good purchase and I think we'll feel very comfortable with it. And, uh, you know, yeah, yes or no?
So ladder truck came out of Fairfax?
It, it did, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the heavy rescue came out of Loudoun County, which is still Northern Virginia area. But, but we had, uh, our, our committee, which is mostly comprised of, always comprised of all volunteers from, mostly, even I, with me kind of just being kind of the, the group, not necessarily leader, but the, the, the big toe, so to speak. But, uh, they, they found that and negotiated that deal at the time.
So let me sit on the stand correctly. You have a committee that evaluated the purchase, procurement of the ladder truck, that advised against doing.
True.
Okay. And then a person at the top? Who made the decision?
Uh, it was above me, so it's either, uh, the former chief and or the former family administrator. I don't know who it was.
I'm just trying to understand how it worked, you know, not, because, you know, it seems to me, you know, if we've got a system in place and we have recommendations and we go away aside the system we have in place, I hope you fix that.
Oh, yeah. And I think we did a really good job with the heavy rescue and, you know, just like buying any.
And they replaced one. How old was the heavy rescue truck that you replaced?
I think if I'm not mistaken, it's in two thousand and nine.
The one you bought, so two thousand and nine?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't replace one.
Yeah, we didn't.
We didn't have that.
The one we replaced was a two thousand.
Oh, okay.
Chief, there was a question with the ladder truck. It's not a good purchase or we got off selling it and using IP, going on a twenty-two for a ladder truck.
I don't think we'll come out running ahead. And, and one of the things, because we're, this is today. We're, we're here in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two might have a different picture because some of our neighbors might be able to offer a better service around us. Tucson County has purchased a second ladder truck. So one might be closer to us geographically in the future.
But we're using that truck, probably.
To, uh.
Are we using the ladder truck?
Yeah, we have, yes, we do. But in, but in the future, Chesterfield is building a fire station in Loudoun. And that anticipates the head of the ladder truck there. So we might have better options in the future, but as of today, twenty twenty-one, what we have now is what is probably best for our system. Is it expensive? Yes, it's really expensive and everything. In the future, we probably, we might have an ability to, to make better decisions in the future. But as of this budget meeting, I think that's the best I can tell you. We might sit around this table next year and be able to forecast a different view as our neighbors grow. Does that make sense?
Keeping equipment as long as we do. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like it has much residual market value out there.
And, and again, I guess it depends on what you, what you consider residual value. We sold our old heavy rescue for thirty thousand dollars. It's just, it's a, it's a price of the vehicle itself or staff. But it's, it, to me, that's not, it's a drop in the bucket for a new.
But still thirty grand.
Though we sold the two fire engines that were replaced to the West, they went for just shy of five thousand dollars. So, you know, it depends on the unit and, and how it's been maintained and, and the value that, you know, somebody else sees it.
This is totally wrong. More of a curiosity question, who purchases a fire truck like that? I mean, is it?
There's brokers that buy them all the time. Or have, uh, got yours. The last two that were purchased, the last one went to a used car lot and they resold it pretty quickly and another, uh, I think it's in Northern Virginia somewhere. Might be used for construction.
Ford or Range.
Could be Ford.
Do we have an agreement with Cumberland County to help them?
Yes, yeah, we, all our neighbors, we have them.
If the landfill goes through, will that have an impact on us?
It does have a potential that, that Chester, and I can only speak from my, from my experiences. In Henrico County, we occasionally would have a, a fire at the dump in Charles, uh, Charles City Road, not Charles City, Charles City Road. And, you know, that would be a, a long event, manpower intensive and equipment intensive that they might not be able to handle themselves. So I'm sure we'll be there, Dootson will be there, and maybe even some folks from the West.
Madam Chair. It would be good mutual aid.
Yeah.
Sort of like Lovey's fire station, their ladder truck that's coming in a matter of time. Dootson's ladder truck is coming. The, uh, I don't know, I kind of, part of me thinks that the cars or something like apparatus that you're involved in. State of the art is not always great.
Correct.
Because you got to get through it. It's just like you, you, you mentioned with your ambulances, the two thousand and seventeen Dodges. You're not a hundred percent sure of how they're going to be longevity wise. It looks really good right now, I think, from what I'm understanding. And from what little I would.
From what we spend on them in, in three, and just coming into the fourth year, uh, yeah, we're, we're going to have.
Really good.
Based on what we were purchasing before as a chef.
Right. And your repair costs and maintenance upkeep. I want to point out that your transportation facility does a pretty good job at helping them keep up with all of that.
Absolutely.
That's, it's a good team effort there. But you can, I guess, you know, with anything, you can buy a lemon along the way, never enough. And then you got a problem. And that's sort of where we went with our ladder truck because we have, we, we, we didn't listen to maybe who we should have been listening to.
We, we could probably have that.
Yeah. Yeah. So the ladder truck, to me, I, I'm not even sure I understand why we ever bought a ladder truck. Of course, I wasn't in this role at that point. I, I'm, you know, when you were going over it earlier, you know, these tall buildings, where are they in the alleys?
Well, just, just bear in mind, the longest ground ladder we had was thirty-five feet long. So we have some significant homes that exceed that roof, roof lines, chimney lines. And, and then we have Walmart, we have schools, we have this building, we can't ladder this building with the ground. So, so there is just enough buildings that, that make us worry. We have correctional.
To be prepared.
Yeah.
You want to be prepared.
Yeah. And it's part of our job to be prepared. And it was probably the right thought process to purchase and use that instead of spending a million dollars a few years ago. And then we're really not getting that value out of it that we want.
Right. Do you, how much you spend on that truck?
I don't know off the top of my head. I think somebody, one of our residents had forwarded that information and that member saw what the code was.
Would you not, would you take a guess?
It's a bad memory.
Uh, you know, I, I like the twenty year. Hold on to them because I think that, um, you do a really good job. The county has historically done a good job of maintaining fire apparatus, sheriff's office vehicles, all the public safety vehicles. I think, is, is it Station Six? Is that the new proposal down the road, maybe? Possible, you know, it's in, in, in the plan.
It's in the plan. We want, I don't want, we, we have to think ahead, but, you know, again, it really depends on how our family works.
Chief? That's planning. You're doing an awesome job. Awesome job. Um, we have a, a lot of these, I think it's Dodge, what we, because I see the Durangoes out now. I know you're down to explore. So is the Durango the path we're going?
That's my preferred, based on size, drivability, uh, it looks like, it looks like it's a really nice vehicle. I had the opportunity when we had new, uh, we drove one out to Ohio. Great vehicle. It was like, don't want to have that stuff. And it's really good, especially compared to the size of not the one I drive. I'm in a Honda Civic, it doesn't really matter. But I have the passion, it's, it's tight. Just not.
So when I went through the inventory, looks like there's about, and this could be awful a little bit, about thirty-nine pieces of equipment, apparatus, units. Does that sound pretty close of what you got? And then you've got thirteen other pieces, you know, the trailers. Quite of their own one, that's like individual stuff. That they pay for those through volunteers, raises money, right?
Therefore.
Did we just buy any of those? This week?
We have a pair of that.
Yeah, that's, so we have seven, is that what I'm?
We have six, that will make it seven.
Okay, so, so when that one arrives, we have seven. And at that point, in looking at what I'm looking at here with the inventory, it looks like we're almost projecting to buy a new ambulance every year, right?
And, and the, and I wanted to plan that way because as, as we look at this Ram chassis or the Dodge chassis, uh, it, that could affect it in the future, they're into a positive. It might end up making, you know, we might be able to skip every third year or something like that. But for now, without having the, we, we had, we don't have over seventy-five thousand miles yet. But it looks like we, in the future, we might be able to pull one out because we'll get some more on J.
Right. Which would be good.
And then, and make that happen, actually.
Um, the, uh, the ladder truck, it looks like two thousand and twenty-four is when you want to replace or buy a new one. So when you say in a, in a CIP, FY twenty-four, one point two million for a ladder truck, when do we get that ladder truck? We pay? It takes two years to build it or a year to build it?
It takes probably about three months to have a specification and a process to, to find the buyer, whether to buy it through a, a recognized contract or if it's been it out. And then it's typically a year to just a little over a year to manufacture.
So if that's in our CIP to twenty twenty-four, we probably won't see it till sometime late in twenty twenty-five, a fair, fair assessment.
And that would be the same with just about any of our fire, the, the fire engines, tankers, same thing, process. Just because it's in there. We have, we have a tanker this year. We won't see it this year. We'll see it a year from now.
But you're planning on that basis.
Right. We, we have to start the process.
Yeah, that's. And that doesn't matter whether it's new or used. You used.
Used, used.
No, no, you know, you, with the heavy rescue, you've spent some time and money getting that straightened out, did you not?
Sure. It, it took some time, but probably not, not over a year.
It wasn't fifteen months.
Yeah.
The, the, um, the ladder truck. We've been bitten once, but we didn't listen to who we should have listened to. Is it maybe feasible? Would it be a better idea to think about buying a previously owned ladder truck again or?
If, and.
Go down this route?
If this, if we were in, at that year right now.
Yeah.
If we're, if, if we made, the ladder truck would need to be purchased right now. There's a manufacturer out there that is doing a, a lease, lease program on ladder trucks. So, uh, Brand X leases a fire apparatus, a ladder truck to a, to a fire company somewhere in the United States. They keep it for seven years and then the manufacturer takes it back. That's what I would, that's what I would probably lean towards right now, buying that one instead of a brand new.
Right.
And gently used because in the course of twenty years, that's still only a third of the time. And depending on where you, where it was purchased from, how heavy the use was, a unit coming from Fairfax is a, is a very well-used.
Right.
Apparatus. Coming from a smaller city and somewhere in USA, you might have significantly less weight.
And, and if, if you go down that route of previous, and we're, we're projecting out as to where we are, what's we're on, and what the deal of the day could be when we get there. But there's that, I would think, a pretty distinct possibility of a previous.
That would be a great opportunity to spend less funds, but.
Right.
I want, don't want to.
I got your point.
Then to say, oh, no, we're going to spend a million dollars and we said five hundred thousand.
Yep.
I'd rather go the opposite.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I'm with you. Um, so do we have any area picked out or selected as to where a, a Company Six would be in Powtans?
And we kind of hit on this a little bit at one of your other meetings. There's multiple locations. It depends on how we, how it's, it's based off either growth of the county, call response of the county, or ISO, which is affected by our insurance rates or the citizen insurance rate. So if you pick the insurance ratings, it would be, uh, seven eleven, five twenty-two.
Right.
Affects the most people who are poorly, that have a, a nine or a ten on the ISO rating. So they pay the highest home insurance charge. If we went based off of call volume, most likely it's going to be at Red Land sixty area because the sixty corridors are busiest area by far. And then if, if you went with another type of matrix, which could be just growth, it might be the seven eleven, two eighty-eight area because that is just growing with commercial apartments and it's just a big local area. And then the last area that we kind of gentiled is the southern portion of District Two, which is that Genito area that is still, it's growing, but it's, it's an area that's pretty vast and it takes a lot of time for Station One or Station Two to get to that area. So it could be responsive at that point. We don't know which one is the best, but as we get there, as the county grows and the demand is there, it probably helps lead us in that direction. But we, we can't figure that out on our own. We're going to have to help, have to have some more planning department and, and the board and, and citizen input to bring all that together and make what's our best decision for that. So.
One thing, it, we've, according to our CIP, we've got, I guess, the land acquisition fees in fiscal year twenty-one.
One thing, according to our CIP, we've got, I guess, the land acquisition fees in fiscal year twenty two and the building starting the following year. So you, it sounds like if you're not in a position to move forward to the station now, it sounds like we could slide the land purchase back out of twenty two. That's one of these, that's where we've got to structure it, right, on the three, here in this first year.
And there is, and the county does own a small piece of property in Bonham and Tillington's farm, which is in there. But it's an awkward shaped piece of property that's probably not a, what I would call a building. Buildable lot, you have to have some purchasing.
Yes, I recall the problem. Right, it wasn't a problem.
Wires over the top.
But we don't need to get into that.
It meant the intent of the problem.
It depends on what's out there in the world.
So, so this will be my last question. The two thousand twenty two, that means the land?
That is land purchase.
This, this year? So we purchase, we go through the process, and it looks like in FY twenty eight, there's approximately one point seven million dollars worth of apparatus to acquire, three of which, or maybe, yeah, three of which would be, they're designated to go to that station in two thousand twenty eight. Do we need to move that back?
I don't know, like, I don't know, I, you know, I hate to use this case, but I am learning as I go.
Right.
And, and, you know, we're just trying to give you tools to, to plan for the future because I'm learning to be a planner for the future because I've clearly been a reactionary person most of my life because that's the way we've always acted.
And when the bell goes, you take off. That's pretty reactionary.
Correct.
Take off and go. I got it.
And I'm learning to try to be a better planner, but one of those things is, is, well, you know, as each year goes by, we'll have a better idea and we can, it might get bump or it might, you know, might move forward, it might move back. And it really depends on how I, how I can restore.
When they're, well, from the back, you know, when we had the issue of that response times. The trust bill has different response times for their rural areas. So in the plan for this fire station, you know, I would be looking at, you know, where is the critical D in the county, okay? Because you've got a lot of people, a lot of calls, and you're not meeting your response times that you feel like you should for suburban, urban area, or even, you know, rural area, and then we drive my decision. Look, yeah, things like that.
Yeah, and that's what we'll do. I just don't, I do not, I don't have the time to do that. And that's why I'm going to have to.
But John, the system, I understand, that reports, you know, your response time, job inquiry, and bring out that information. So what I'm going to be seeing is, you know, what does it look like serving the county by different geographic areas? Whether you want to manage rural, suburban, urban, or whatever. And then look at what your standards are for the response times. And then look at the frequency of calls coming from that area.
So, and just so everyone knows, Palatine is rural. There's no part of it that even meets the suburban criteria.
Okay, so you're talking like Boundless Bridge doesn't meet the suburban criteria?
Because it's still in a small, it's such a small area based on the size of Palatine.
No, I'm talking about, you know, it's a component part of Palatine. You know, I can't really compare, you know, Boundless Bridge, you know, that was being developed, and particularly now with the apartments coming in. But they, you know.
I still think the volume of people don't, I don't think it meets the criteria that, I just don't think. But if it is, it would be a very microcosm area.
NFPA sets those standards based on density, number of people per square mile. In terms of.
And there's, there's a multiple, there's a multitude of standards that's just to decide which one we want to work by.
Chief, I'm going to leave it up to you.
But if you're, you're a hundred percent provider, it's, that, it still hinges on the response times. But it also, we have, we should factor in the people who we aren't serving with the insurance rate as well, in my opinion. I think it's a combination of, it's going to, you know.
Who's critical, you know, more critical than ever.
With responses and what you respond to, it doesn't seem like you can get a new fire station very far from sixty. I mean, that's, that's.
Well, and, you know, one of the big.
Particularly, particularly if this landfill comes in, I mean, the amount of accidents that, you know, on sixty, that eats up so much of your.
Just bear in mind, we have three fire stations now on the sixty corridor.
You were talking about sixty and Red Lane.
Right, exactly. And that's not, you know, I don't know how the dump law affects this, but I know I watched the traffic in the morning and the evening on sixty.
You've noticed.
Matt, Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask one more question, Chief? The calls are down quite a bit. Totally yearly call volume, like about ten percent. What do you attribute that to?
I think it was COVID. I really do. We hit, we lost, and it was probably the best until anyone was, EMS response. People did not want to go to the hospital at the beginning of this because that was one of the, the people were afraid they were going to get it there. So a lot of people did not call. And then people weren't quite as active, I guess, and so.
And people weren't driving the war like they did.
Our roads were empty, so I know our motor vehicle.
I think that, I mean, the sheriff's out there, but I think his calls volume was down too.
But I can see hours increasing this year.
Right.
And it's, it's starting to track upwards. We, since we draw revenue from our EMS transport, this month was a good month as far as revenue.
That was just a, that was just a T-bones in Academy.
Thanks a lot.
All right, guys, what else can we want to add on to that? I'm going to wrap it up, Howard.
Please.
I've got some questions. It's maybe more clarification. We could dead horses, Dave, you said earlier. If we, I mean, I shouldn't say if. Tax rate, what's our time frame? I mean, do we need to make that decision by the end of March?
Yes.
March meeting.
That's the advertised.
Well, you have to advertise in March six.
If it stays the same or lower, you're okay.
All we have to do is be in a position to print bills.
The treasurer's office said usually around the mid to late April, I think it was April twenty sixth. That's like the drop dead date. I think they'd like to do it earlier. But in order to get the bills to the taxpayers by May fifth, to give them a month, that's their, their normal schedule for that June fifth. Or this year will be June seventh.
So when do we decide the tax rate? That's my, that's my question.
I tried dabbling in that state, obviously, more to talk about this, though.
I got a camera up here, this is a camera we added to the list today, but this is which kind of.
So, if, on March twenty second. I can't read.
It's pretty logical there. It's March twenty second, you're right.
But is there, we have a, see, we have a joint meeting with the school board on the sixteenth. So that's the only meeting we have between now and, and March twenty second. Are we just going to walk in on March the twenty second and say, here's our tax rate? Or we're going to have a meeting in, in between?
Well, you could decide it at the March twenty ninth meeting. You know, the one on the twenty second is where you have to, you know, just basically give grace over, say, the eighty three cents. We could talk about it and discuss it, I think, at the March twenty ninth meeting, what we would want the final one to be quite correct.
Yeah, so if we get rid of that.
This, and heavy questions, Jamie's raised his hand, too.
So March twenty second, if we're March twenty second and discuss, don't make a discussion and make a decision by the twenty ninth?
So.
Or we have a special meeting.
Or we have another meeting.
Right, um, when do we have to decide our budget?
The April nineteenth. No, we need to decide by March twenty ninth so that I can publish it in the paper. The public hearing is on the nineteenth. I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
So we'll say that one more time.
So this is, again, just a guideline, but in order for me to have enough time to get it to the Palatine today for the April nineteenth public hearing, the March twenty ninth was the date that we selected that you would decide what budget you wanted to advertise.
So, March twenty ninth, we need to decide a tax rate and we need to decide a budget. And that puts us in the position to go to in-house assessment, everything flows well, and we're on the cycle to get something done.
Do you want another meeting between now and then, another workshop?
I would like us to think about another workshop after we've met with the schools.
I think that's fair.
That's a good option. Because that's the big goal.
Yeah.
Yes, see, I, we can't say who's on. No, I don't know who's on.
Yeah, sorry, you raised your hands, Tim Lake, I, I welcome to join us.
Yeah, just one, I heard the discussion about the treasurer printing the bill, but that stuff doesn't magically appear on her side. We need time on our side to process it after you've set a tax rate. In the past, the real estate in the past, since we've been doing the fiscal year thing, real estate hasn't mattered because there's been no change. All we've had to worry about was personal property. If we go back to a calendar year, which I thought I was hearing is a positive on the board's side, then, I mean, we need at least fourteen days, twenty one would be better to get this done. I mean, the way it works in the past is we work Saturdays, Sundays, and everything straight to get it in the system after the board adopts a rate so that we can have it ready for phase deadline to get it to a printer.
So is it right now the twenty ninth of March, would that get you there?
Twenty ninth of March would.
It would.
Would or would not?
It would, he said.
Which is good, but I kept hearing nineteenth of April or something thrown around in there.
Okay, twenty sixth. Basically, he needs his stuff by twenty nine of March.
Maybe saying, yeah, twenty ninth of March, tax rate has to be done, or all the bills and everything can be done.
Well, wait a minute. April nineteenth is a public hearing on the budget. We can't finalize that till after we've had.
That's correct.
Till we've had a public hearing, I'm sorry. There's no reason to have the public hearing if you go.
If you already decided the budget.
Yeah, well, your tax rate is part of the budget. But it may be part of the budget, but especially if you put it up with tax rate and it has the budget, you know, on the nineteenth, if anything else.
Because the tax rate's the critical thing for Jamie. That's, that's what he needs.
That's correct. What you do with the.
With the budget, it's a government to him, yeah.
If the tax rate, if tax rate, we keep it the same or go down, we don't have to advertise.
Correct.
And we don't have to have a public.
Yeah, okay, so we're, that's okay, we're good, we're good.
All right, so what are we saying we're going to do?
We're going to have another meeting after the.
Talking about with the.
What's the dates, the coming?
The rate, the tax rate, what are we going to do with that? To make sure that we're performing with the constable officers, what are we doing?
We have to have that picked from about by March twenty ninth.
So we have to adopt a rate, adopt a rate, and then we're going to adopt a budget later.
Yes, yes.
Unless you come together.
Okay, I'm just.
I'm with you.
Excuse me, because you realize when you adopt that rate, it's not like the advertising. You've adopted the rate, okay, and that's going forward.
You can't spend money you don't have.
Right, okay, well, what I'm going with this now, you're going to have to deal with anything that's in the budget based on that rate. There's no going back. So I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. You're locking in your real estate rate that's going to drive or in your budget that you will be adopting later. As long as everybody's comfortable with that.
Um, I was just wondering, do you want to do, we need the schools on the sixteenth, do you want to see if you can do the nineteenth, that Friday again? I don't know if you got it, you know, that's the thought. Hope that works.
Available to meet all the parents' sides of society. And you bring the chicken, right?
I want the big bucket this time.
So the nineteenth, are we good on that? Nineteenth of March.
Looking, Ned, can you put the graph back up there that has unbalanced graph that has your back of the envelope adjustment for salaries, one of the squats? We had a, but it was a budget adjusted for salaries.
That's kind of what you've got there in the cabal on that, right?
Yeah, but I want to, the graph is what I want to say.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, I'm sorry, thank you. There we go.
There we go, there we go.
This, make sure I've got the, what do you want turned on, you want the?
Yeah, I wanted that on.
Get that on, okay, we go back to that. That'll do, okay.
So we've got problems in twenty four and twenty five, things really get tight.
Twenty three is it?
Okay, now, what happened to Parks and Rec, seven million bucks in this scenario? We're buying it, or borrowing six million one, okay? So that's one of the things, in all of these graphs, should we look, can we break that up into multiple pieces and stagger it over two or three years and give ourselves some breathing room just by how we orchestrate it? Not kicking, I'm not talking about kicking it down the road ten years, okay? But can we, rather than seven billion bucks, can we spend, and I have to go back and look at how the projects go together, can we spend it in multiple pieces over two or three years rather than one, and give ourselves a little breathing room just by doing that?
Are you talking about spending, or are you talking about going to market?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, the projects that are coming, that are hitting you in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, let me show you that. This chart here shows you a list of, I'll slide a little bit so you can see in twenty three. This is, this is your, this is your item that you have flexed building. We just talked about the fire station, two accidents, you know, that, that's a big piece of your, of your, of your issue. Do we defer that?
What I'm talking about, we have a bulge, okay, in this, okay, which is, which, can we look at that in terms of, we also have a bunch of stuff up there for Parks and Rec.
Right.
Can we look at, I'm going to make up something, dude, two projects at Park and Rec, but another, another one staggered out. Can we spread this out, and will that, will that do anything for us?
Once we get past the critical, the graph that you just saw, the twenty, two thousand twenty five range, we start picking up some, some, some flexibility. So we did, all you're asking for is just to get a little cushion in these three years.
Just simply by rearranging these, if we need to get it done, then we get it done, then. And by, yeah, just simply by rearranging these, if, if we need to get it done, then we get it done, then, but. I'm looking for.
Really?
Managing the CIP, that's what this model's for, okay, so it gives us more. Room because. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't have, that doesn't have much flex in it.
Well, you do, you do have some flex in terms of going forward with the project, like, you know, the chief was talking about with the fire station. You know, he doesn't know, he doesn't have certainty that he's gonna need to do it in the designated year. He's putting it out there so that we will know. And if that does come to pass, when we get there, it won't be a starter shot.
It was a pair. But we didn't have, we, we didn't have. I'm sorry, go ahead. We didn't have a big bubble, what was Parks and Rec, seven million bucks, okay, and so. Can we break that up? Rather than, and it shows here as twenty-twenty-five, can we break that up? That's all. Oh, yeah, does that do anything? Six million in twenty-twenty-five, let's do two and a half million in twenty-twenty-five, two million in twenty-twenty-seven, two million in twenty-thirty, something like that. Something like that. Where the gap becomes wide. Right, and does that really help us if we do that? Sometimes you think it does.
Well, that service piece, they, that service piece on that six million one is probably in the four and a half million range, and so. Those three years, we've spent four and, four and, four hundred. In order to pay back those six million one, that's kind of weak.
I don't know if it really.
That is kind of a trade, that service payment is to kind of, it produces the impact of paying what that particular project, but if you go to, we could go to. Some of the other projects, those are the projects.
Yeah, I mean. If, if, if we were in a situation that something popped up unbeknownst COVID, something else happened, you know, we've got a three percent. Pay raise in there every year. Right, right, right. So we can adjust that. We can take it to the zero or go to one or whatever. I mean, there's, there's so many options to how you go about it. And, I mean, that's to me, when I look at this and how you've done, you've done a great job. Mitch Miller's can say that right there. This is just so many options of how we can maneuver around to stay out of trouble. And it gives us an opportunity to be prepared for the trouble. And make adjustments. My.
Similarly, you know, it's a CIP, you don't have money, you don't do it.
You don't do it.
You don't do it, you know, it's fine and simple.
And that's kind of where, I was hoping we go, I was kind of hoping, you know. Part of my marketing issue, you guys, you mentioned salaries, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a DNA, you know, what we're gonna pay, we'll pay whatever we'll pay always. And CIP becomes the. Can we afford this year?
Yeah.
Sure, CIP becomes a weekly aid project, a split project. Thanks, I appreciate it, I think, I think we've got some flexibility because of sound approach, we got the timing, but we talked about. If we don't borrow at six million one right now, like, you know, we do, we hit below. And then just, just moving around, I just have to build stack up, it's, I would have to be, right, it would have to be a debt, it could be further out. And then part of the money for that, but I always have that. Take this one line, if we pay as you go on that.
The CIP in terms of total, hadn't changed much. Okay, so I, suggestion was, that's a tool. If you say, well, no, it's not gonna accomplish anything, then.
Just that project, because that project will borrow money on, everything else, we borrow money on that tool works for. Works for fire station, it works for.
Because it's all pay as you go.
It's all pay as you go. One example, the challenge was one of the borrowing.
And the reason. We're now borrowing six million bucks because of the tax rate. Is that what you're telling us?
It keeps us, it keeps us above our hungry balance goals, is that. Like we picked up a little capacity because of paying out some debt and ratios.
Our fund balance, the, the, the capacity, as you said. Palatine has historically, I think, policy-wise, fifteen percent. When we did the revenue stabilization plan last year, that picked up the other three percent, right?
Right.
And that's what takes us up to the eighteen percent. So we've got a lot of cushion there, um, which I think was the plan all along, to be, you know, prepared and have, you know, a conservative base to it. But we are. We're planning to spend a pile of cash in twenty-twenty-two, right? We are, okay, so. We don't have to spend a pile of cash in twenty-twenty, that's in the CIP.
Right.
Okay, so I'm just suggesting that.
Right, like the land acquisition.
We look at, we look at that, okay, and if it doesn't yield anything, fine, if it does.
Right. But. Yeah, and, and, and my point is, the twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-three helps, twenty-two pushing, uh. Pushing back, uh, all we're doing is. We're still dropping into this period here where we're already kind of aligned. You know, I really, the high stock, they probably sit around twenty-four, twenty-five. And push those out, or, or rearrange those, because twenty-two ones are just, they'll still be in the same valley, whether we're twenty-three or twenty-four.
And that's gonna exacerbate that problem.
Right.
If we push those.
But we're, we're spending, we're pushing out ten million bucks in CIP in twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
It's.
Uh, if we, if we take it out past this valley here, we're, we're golden, but, but, but I think the next three years. It doesn't help us, but if we take it out past twenty-five, it helps us.
Anything else? Okay. Uh, we will now have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your address for the record, check our Zoom.
Chase, I don't see anybody to trace their hands.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll close our public comment period, I don't believe Tom's attendance, county administrator comments. All right, board comments?
Yes. We'll talk tonight about going forward with a three percent merit raise, you know, for county employees, schools. Going out across a ten-year period. Talk about ten years F A. For now, we've documented, you know, projects. For things like Parks and Rec, sort of what we're borrowing money for. Uh, we've got projects, you know, in public safety. About the, you know, the emergency system. But going back to the former. Now that we've documented a ten, ten-year CIP and getting ready to adopt it. We should be developing a proper policy ASAP. It's there, there's no reason not to do it, it's there. Secondly. Going to the latter. If we're gonna do merit increases. I'm gonna be a strong advocate. Of implementing a personnel evaluation system. Something different from what we have today that really measures what people do. And holds people accountable to achieving goals within the time periods specified within the. Goal setting of the budgets for their departments. I think we owe it to the citizens of this county, we owe it to ourselves. To do that. And I'm gonna be a strong, uh, I'm a strong advocate, we're gonna propose to do these three percent increases, of course, we can impose that on the schools, right? But for our county employees, this is something we need today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I can, that's. As y'all know, I asked for a closed session. Uh, and part of that is to talk about the compensation system. And it's more, Mr. Williams couldn't agree more. But it's more than a matrix, it's more than a form, it is a culture change.
I didn't imply otherwise. You know, I mean, I, I, I'm not a paperwork person, you know, where you, you just do it, you know, to have it on file, but I've never been an advocate of that, I know the difference.
I'm, I'm looking for a plan that says how we're going to change our culture, how we talk to each other. Okay, just, and that's gonna take some major efforts. That's not easy. So that's, I just, it, this is a great idea, it's, it's got a lot of work attached to it, that's all.
Well, I don't wanna avoid it just because it's work involved. You know, I, I, I'm not, you're not saying that, I know that, you're not saying that, but, you know. It, and I agree with you, it is, you know, work involved in doing this. And it is a culture change, and it's a training effort involved. It's, you know, you know.
It's a, it's a management tool that we can, we can, we can raise what expectations are of our employees and make great expectations that they have of themselves. No, by, by measuring performance. This is a step, this is a step in the right direction we're talking about here to get, to get this concept in place. It's got time to, now we got, now we're going this direction, let's, let's get the infrastructure in place. How, how does it, how do we roll it out and get that accomplished, your goal.
Well, it has, it has to be something, you know, that we define as an objective, you know, going forward, that we want our goal, that we want to accomplish, otherwise. It still won't get done.
Mr. Cox. Are you done? Five, Lady Cox?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You need your?
Well, I have a map, Karen, and a map of the, between guys. And I have a minute, I just wanted to say, the citizen.